Good afternoon. I call to order the meeting of the Hamilton County Commission of our regular meeting of May the 27th. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
And good afternoon to our Clerk of the Board and our County Administrator who was with us also. Yes, we'll get started. Our first order of business, of course, is a silent prayer and then the Pledge of Allegiance. I would just ask that we think about the many victims of the mass shooting on yesterday in San Jose, California. Please for a moment of prayer. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the and to the Republic with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Ms. Somrados?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Our next order of business is presentations. I'm going to have Commissioner Drehouse lead this discussion. This was her idea.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate that. So we are doing some presentations related to Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which is the month of May. So we're squeezing it in here at the end. So I appreciate all of the offices participating. So each of the offices have chosen two individuals that we think obviously are worthy of the notoriety in the community because of the work that they've done in this community and the contributions they've made to the community. So, Madam Commissioner, I am happy to go first and read through. Kind of that we have kind of a standard beginning to the resolutions that simply talk about the importance of the month and why we're doing this, and then they're tailored for each of the individuals that we're recognizing. So let me go ahead and read that top part, and then I guess I'll do my two and then turn it over to you.
Okay.
So, all right. So I will read the top of this, and I'm very grateful that the honorees, many of whom are on today, could join us and are willing to accept the recognition. So they are proclamations recognizing the six individuals that we will be announcing today for their contributions to Hamilton County. So it reads, whereas the Hamilton County Commissioners recognize May as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, also known as AANHPI. This is, Madam President, this is why you have me doing this, because it's a month. And that this month be a time to better understand the contributions made by Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders to Hamilton County and the United States of America, and whereas Asian Americans and Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders make our community more vibrant through diversity of cultures, languages, and religions. There is no single story of the AANHPI experience, but rather a diversity of contributions that enrich America's culture and society. And whereas Hamilton County celebrates and honors the invaluable contributions the AANHPI communities have made to our nation's culture and arts, law, science, and technology, sports, and public service, including the courageous AANHPIs who have served on the front lines of the COVID-19 pandemic as healthcare providers, first responders, teachers, and other essential workers. And whereas, Hamilton County recognizes the heightened fear felt by many Asian American communities in the wake of increasing rates of anti-Asian harassment and violence during the COVID-19 pandemic, and the increasing observable layers of hate now directed towards women and elders of Asian descent in particular. Hamilton County stands shoulder to shoulder with the AANHPI communities in condemning, denouncing, and preventing these acts of violence. And so whereas this community, it's, you know, AANHPI Heritage Month, Hamilton County celebrates the exemplary contributions of these residents to Hamilton County. And so then we go into the individual narratives about our honorees. So my first one is going to Daniel Rajaya. Daniel graduated from Sycamore High School in the University of Dayton, is a business and community leader who has demonstrated a commitment to public service and volunteerism. Daniel has a career in the public sector as the Executive Director of the Indian American Chamber of Commerce in a former life, and now as a leader in the private sector, having been recognized by Forbes as a 30 under 30 honoree. And whereas Daniel gives back to our community through his service on the Board of Block Ministries, which has helped lift thousands of families out of poverty, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does recognize and celebrate the contributions of Daniel Rajaya to Hamilton County and to our community. And we further proclaim that the 30th Day of May, 2021, will be Daniel Rajaya Day in all of Hamilton County. So congratulations, Dan. Delighted. Daniel and I go way back. Yeah, Madam President, I don't know if we're asking for comments or we're rolling through.
Um, we certainly can have comments, yeah, well, especially from Daniel.
All right, Daniel.
Madam President, Commissioner Drehouse and Commissioner Reese, it's such an honor to be recognized by the county today on this, on this first occasion, I believe, that the county is recognizing the AAPI History Month. So I just want to thank you three for your leadership for the county. I know you, all of you, have been very active in the Asian American community, coming to, whether it's the Chinese Chamber Gala or the Indian Chamber Gala, or just being active in providing resources for our members. It was just this week that I was reaching out to all three of you about a struggling AAPI business. You all have been just tremendous supporters of the community, and it's an honor to be recognized and to be a partner with all of you in this journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. And partner is a good word for you. Thank you for being on. My second one goes to Felicity Tao. Unfortunately, Felicity could not be here, so I'm not going to read through all of her accomplishments, other than to say, I met her a number of months ago during the pandemic. She organized what's called the Food of Love Campaign. It is food that comes in from Chinese restaurants and is delivered out then to people in need in this community. And especially throughout the pandemic, it was especially important to have that available for people. So Felicity has done a number of other things in the community, but that, to my view, is her most recent contribution. And so let me see which day. So we're proclaiming the 27th Day of May, 2021, as Felicity Tao Day in all of Hamilton County. And so I want to thank and congratulate both of those individuals. And Madam President, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to both of you. Vice President Reese, I'll let you continue because we're looking at the days, and so you fall right in line with the next days to declare.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to honor Dr. Joseph Patourey. He serves as the pastor of Indian Baptist Church Congregation of Cincinnati and is a former president of Temple Bible College. Dr. Joseph Patourey serves, as I said, as the pastor of Indian Baptist Church and past and former president of Temple Bible College. He is also a frequent speaker at churches, conferences, and conventions held across America and around the world. His passion is to reach the unreached with the Gospel of Jesus Christ. He is the founder and president of Trans World Ministries, which is an international mission endeavor in America and around the globe. He's also co-founder and vice president of Global Telugu Christian Ministries. Dr. Joseph Patourey dedicates his life toward building an inclusive community for all Asian Americans within Hamilton County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners do hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Dr. Joseph Patourey to Hamilton County. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does hereby proclaim, May 28, 2021, Dr. Joseph Patourey Day in all of Hamilton County.
Thank you so much, Vice President Reese and the President and all the Board of Commissioners. Thank you for your kind and gracious and generous recognition. May all glory and honor be unto the Lord and for the benefit of humanity in Hamilton County, across America, and even around the world. I can't miss you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Next, we're honoring Mr. Leo Chan, who is the Executive Director of the Midwest USA Chinese Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Leo Chan currently serves as Executive Director of the Midwest USA Chinese Chamber of Commerce. Leo is also a seasoned finance and technology professional and has worked with Fortune, has worked with Fortune 500 companies in Asia, Europe, and North America. Mr. Chan holds a master's degree in business administration from the University of Cincinnati. Prior to that, he was educated in Paris and was admitted by Science, Poe, and HEC's MBA programs in 1999. He also co-founded technology startups in the United States since 2004 and has led a number of mergers and acquisitions in North America and Asia since 2005. Prior to his position, he was Chief Investment Officer at SR Investments, a university alumni fund, and Managing Director of TCL Capital. Mr. Chan also speaks fluent English, Mandarin, Cantonese, with knowledge of French and Japanese. Mr. Chan has strived to be a leader and continues to foster strong bilateral relationships for Hamilton County's Chinese community. Now be it therefore proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Leo Chan in Hamilton County and our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, do hereby proclaim, May 29, 2021, Leo Chan Day in all of Hamilton County.
Thank you very much. It's an honor, and the Chinese Chamber continued to serve this region, and we work there closely with our partners in the Chamber world, including the Indian Chamber of Commerce in the Greater Cincinnati area. And from the beginning of the pandemic, we have been able to source a lot of PPE supplies that are critical for our frontline workers. And also at this time of pandemic, we're seeing a lot of sufferings in India, particularly in the rural area where logistics and the infrastructure is not there. Therefore, we work with several partners and as well as the Chamber to provide these, to donate the supplies to the Indians. Hopefully, they can be, they can save lives and help some of the frontline workers over there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations to the ones that we've already talked about. I am not going to read through the whole proclamation because we did well with that, but there's one paragraph I'd like to emphasize, because not only are we recognizing the people that are doing great things, but we want to stand as a commission, as a board. And I think the fourth where as, I'd like to read once again, so people are aware of where we stand as a board. Whereas Hamilton County recognizes the heightened fear felt by many Asian American communities in the wake of increasing rates of anti-Asian harassment and violence during the COVID-19 pandemic, and increasingly observable layers of hate now directed toward women and elders of Asian descent in particular, Hamilton County stands shoulder to shoulder with AANHPI communities in condemning, denouncing, and preventing these acts of violence. So I wanted to read that part. So I have two people that I'd like to talk about right now, and I see Paula Box Muthing is on. And I'm not going, I'm going to read why we selected her. And the last part of the proclamation talks about, whereas Paula Box Muthing was appointed City Manager in October 15, 2020, and serving as interim City Manager from July to October 2020, and City Solicitor from 2014 through July 12, 2020, Ms. Box Muthing was General Counsel and Vice President of Community Revitalization of the Port of Greater Cincinnati Development Authority, a litigator for the City of Cincinnati Law Department, and Associate of Keating, Muthing, and Clay Camp PLL, and a law clerk for the Honorable James E. Keller of the Kentucky Supreme Court. She is also on the Boards and Executive Committees of the Ohio Access to Justice Foundation and the University of Cincinnati College Conservatory of Music. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Paula Box Muthing to Hamilton County and our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the 31st Day of May, 2021, as Paula Box Muthing Day in all of Hamilton County. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'd like to say thank you very much. It is, one, of course, it is my great pleasure to be before these three amazing female commissioners. That is something that is historic in and of itself, so I very much appreciate this and thank you for the recognition. It is really, it really is amazing how far I think we've come as kind of this group of people that is from all these different cultures and languages, and we kind of identify with one another. I think in the wake of some pretty terrible things, it has, it has given us a reason to be more, I don't know, I think, accepting of one another and our differences within this community, the Asian American community, and to be more supportive of one another. And I think ceremonies like this are just so meaningful in that it kind of lifts everyone up. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'm going to move on to Tanya O'Rourke. I don't think she was able to make it today. I'll just read a little bit about her, though. Whereas Tanya O'Rourke is a multiple Emmy Award-winning news anchor and reporter for WCPO TV. As a lifelong Hamilton County resident, Tanya's focus has been on stories that impact her hometown. She has worked at WCPO for 27 years, starting as a weekend assignment editor and worked her way up to being senior news anchor. Tanya loves being a mother and has been committed to many charitable organizations throughout her career, especially the Kidney Foundation. Tanya donated one of her kidneys to a family friend who was in kidney failure. She is forever proud that she could help someone else with this donation of life and stays active with the Kidney Foundation to this day. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize and celebrate the contributions of Tanya O'Rourke to Hamilton County and our community. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the 1st Day of June, 2021, as Tanya O'Rourke Day in Hamilton County.
There's a bit of a mix-up. I apologize. Thank you so very much. I can't, I honestly, when you mentioned this to me a couple weeks ago, Commissioner, I was not just flattered, but completely stunned, and I thank you. I thank you all for all of that. Growing up with a mother who grew up in another country, was, I grew up in Finney Town, right here in Hamilton County, and so for me, it was a blessing to have lived here and grown up here, but also to have that influence in my life, that mother who had this, you know, tough spirit, you know, they talk about women that are steel magnolias, and that was her, and she taught me so much. And she taught me how to be tough but kind, I hope. And she, by the way, when you talk about that kidney donation, she was the reason that I felt so strongly about doing it, because unfortunately, she passed when I was fairly young, but she could not be an organ donor, and she really wanted to be, so I got to fulfill her mission, her life's dream, and her dying wish, too. So thank you so much. She means really a lot to me, and I'm so, so very sorry, I'm really casual and everything, it just caught me, I had a little bit of a mix-up here today. Apologies.
That's no problem. We'll make sure that everyone gets their original proclamation, and as a commission, we made sure that when we proclaimed the day, it wasn't in the middle of the day. So you have a whole day to let everybody know this is your day. So thank you all for what you're doing in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we will move forward. I would like to ask my colleagues if there would not be any objection to move forward to our public hearing and to leave our comments and motions for the end. Okay, no objection. Okay, let's move forward. And we have several public hearings, but I'm going to, we're going to start with the hearing to consider the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And Jeff, a little, is going to give a little rundown on that.
Thank you, Madam President. And yeah, I'm going to be very brief on this so we can get straight to public comments, but this is a hearing to consider the county's usage and recommended concept plan for the 158 million in American Rescue Plan funding received from the federal government by Hamilton County. County Administration had released a proposed concept plan last, at the beginning of last week, recommending a draft allocation plan for the Board's consideration. So we're now, after receiving some targeted stakeholder input, seeking public feedback on that plan during these hearings. So I'd like to briefly walk through the categories of funding that we are recommending. There are four of them. Strengthening Public Health Infrastructure, Stabilizing County Finances and Operations, Addressing Negative Economic Impacts, and Enhancing Community Infrastructure. Bridget? So the, again, I'm going to walk through this extremely quickly, and you know, we have a very busy agenda today. We've done several of these presentations already, but the first bin or category is strengthening public health, 24 million, addressing things like the long-term, long-term and emergent needs of the community from a health and emergency management resiliency perspective, making sure that we're better able to manage these types of issues if and when they arise in the future, making sure that we address and strengthen our system of behavioral health, mental health, and substance abuse response, in particular to the degree that it has been impacted and worsened by the pandemic, and addressing services to disproportionately impacted communities and populations, again, in particular, as those communities have been impacted a greater degree, to a greater degree, by the pandemic. And there are some specific strategies outlined in the concept plan, including efforts to get benefits and resources into these vulnerable and minority communities, as well as a specific project related to assisting the county and the city with the relocation of the gun range in Evendale outside of Lincoln Heights. Bridget? Stabilizing County Finances and Operations. There, through our calculations, the county is eligible for revenue replacement under the American Rescue Plan, which we are recommending through our narrative to be cycled through revenue replacement and to invest in some specific capital projects related to infrastructure around EMA 911, some of our critical banks' infrastructure, as well as cybersecurity improvements in the county as well. We have recommendations related to capital improvements in county facilities to help with facility improvements that would help, again, us respond to the issue and the spread of COVID in those buildings and making those buildings more resilient to the spread of COVID. We have investment in a satellite office to help us, again, reach out and bring the services of county government into some of our surrounding heavily impacted communities. We have an offset for public safety payrolls allowable by the ARP, some funding for premium pay to people who were doing essential work over this period of time, as well as some funding for EMA operations to make sure that we continue to enable ourselves to provide storage for vaccine and to purchase and store and distribute personal protective equipment as needed as well. Bridget? And then we have addressing the negative economic impacts. This is our largest bin focused heavily on the production, preservation and preservation of affordable housing in all of its various forms, whether it's transitional housing, workforce housing, supportive housing, et cetera. We heard this in a lot of our stakeholder meetings, we have $40 million towards that, which also includes $5 million for mortgage assistance for homeowners needing that assistance. We have $15 million devoted to workforce development, including trying to address those areas that are, that are restricting people from getting back into the workforce, such as childcare. We have some dollars in the recommended plan to help with our nonprofits, nonprofit organizations in the county that are really providing some critical social services that are still being impacted. These organizations are still being impacted because of the financial impacts of COVID. We have dollars in the plan for supporting the back office functions of SBE and MBE organizations to allow them to continue especially entrepreneurial work while ensuring that we have a shared service approach to some of these back office functions. And then we have some targeted assistance for small businesses, the hospitality industry, as well as the arts and cultural industry as well. Bridget? And finally, the American Rescue Plan is very specific about the ability to fund certain types of infrastructure, including broadband, sewer, and stormwater. We have dollars allocated towards both of those categories, including $10 million for broadband, which we are recommending initiate with a broader planning process to better understand the needs of broadband in the community, be that from an infrastructure expansion, equality and reliability of service perspective, or simply an affordability perspective, but making sure that we use these dollars to make progress in all of those areas. So, Madam President, Commissioners, that concludes a very brief overview of the Hamilton County Administration's recommended concept plan. Obviously, have our final public hearing today, at which point in time, we would schedule a staff meeting with the Board to review the public comments we've heard, receive any additional feedback from the Board before the Administration would bring what would hopefully be a final, more detailed plan for Board approval, hopefully later in June.
Thank you so much, Jeff. I just have a few guidelines for those that are wanting to make comments. Please use your name, so it's easy to call on you. If you do not wish to use your name, you may enter another identifier, which will be used to call on you. Please click on Raise Hand if you'd like to speak, and we will call on you in the order in which you raise your hand. When called upon, unmute yourself or dial star six on your phone. Please limit your remarks to two minutes. You'll hear a beep when your time is up. After the comment has been given, the microphone for the speaker's Zoom profile will be muted. And remember, even if you give us compliments, that counts as your two minutes. Unfortunately, we had to cut someone off. They were complimenting us, but, so we're going to get started. There's a lot, lots of people that are waiting to speak. Bridget?
Thank you, Madam President. We have Julie Calvert up. Thank you, Madam President. We have Julie Calvert up first, followed by Peggy Zink and Todd Palmer. Julie, you're unmuted on my end.
President Dimas, thank you very much for the opportunity. Good afternoon, Commissioner Dreehouse and Commissioner Reese, thank you for your time and consideration this afternoon. I'm speaking on behalf of the Cincinnati, USA Convention and Visitors Bureau to just give you an overview of, you know, kind of what's happened in our industry since the beginning of the pandemic in March of 2020. And as you know, this industry has been especially hard hit by COVID, coinciding with the onset of the pandemic in March of 2020, all inbound travel to Cincinnati and Hamilton County virtually ceased. In 2020 alone, we saw 166 groups cancel more than 130,000 room nights in Hamilton County. And to date for 2021, we unfortunately lost 15 convention groups worth about 50,500 room nights so far this year. And we're looking forward to hosting our first convention in Hamilton County beginning in June. Revenue at county hotels in 2020 fell 62% in 2020, falling from just $284 million in 2019 to 176 million in the 2020 COVID impacted environment. Job losses have been dramatic. Hotels and restaurants have lost thousands of workers. And unfortunately, our organization has not been immune from that. We saw a staff reduction of 55% permanently terminated positions in 2020. Coinciding with the loss of the travel, all of our outbound marketing mechanisms were silenced, zero advertising, and zero efforts to attract large meetings and conventions to the majority of 2020. As you know, the majority, 95% of the CDB's budget is dependent upon the transient occupancy tax. And these rescue plan dollars represent an opportunity to restart our visitor attraction efforts and begin rebuilding the economic engine of tourism that accounts for 10% again of our region's economy. It's $5 billion in economic impact and 80,000 jobs across the region. On behalf of our board, we're very appreciative of the $2 million that has been set aside, or at least in the plan recommended for this industry. And we're very appreciative of that. We know this pandemic is not over. We're close. And again, I'm at my first convention since February of 2020, right now. And we know that the conventions are going to be coming. We know that there's pent up demand, that people are going to want to get out, they're going to want to restart their lives. And we want to make sure that we, as a destination, are ready to do that aggressively so that we don't lose those visitors to Columbus or Indianapolis or further out. So again, we'll restart our visitor attraction marketing campaigns with aggressiveness and reengage with meeting and convention planners to bring Hallmark Conventions back to Cincinnati, back to Hamilton County. So again, thank you very much for your consideration. And we stand ready to answer questions at any time that any of you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Peggy Zink, followed by Todd Palmer and Artworks.
Good afternoon. My name is Peggy Zink. I'm the President and CEO of Cincinnati Works. We are a member of the Human Services Chamber, and I also sit on the Chamber Board. I'm here to urge you to support the county administrators' proposal for spending American Rescue Plan funds to, especially for the expansion of affordable housing and the strengthening of human services and workforce development. These investments will help the lower income residents of our community that have been most impacted by COVID-19. Cincinnati Works, we have 25 years of history moving people from poverty to self-sufficiency through employment and long-term coaching. At Cincinnati Works, we say that a job is just the beginning. Our success measures, of course, include job training in place that, but more importantly, focus on job retention, advancement, and long-term improvement in financial wellness. We serve both the unemployed and the working poor, focusing on stabilization and upward mobility. We do offer basic job readiness training and job placement, and we have many strong employer relationships that we leverage. But our core competency is coaching, again, focused on that long-term stability. So we provide coaching around personal areas where we can help remove barriers to keeping and advancing in jobs. We offer professional and career coaching focused on succeeding in the workplace, moving up and/or transitioning careers. And we offer financial coaching focused on building credit, improving net income, and increasing savings, ultimately focused on building wealth. We just deliver our services in our main office in downtown Cincinnati. And then also, we have coaches that are now embedded at employer sites who have contracted with us to provide our coaching in the workplace for those who are employed and, you know, needing support to stay employed and move up. Recognizing the issue of growing, the growing issue of suburban poverty, we have laid out a strategy to expand our footprint to open two new offices in suburban communities in Hamilton County that are experiencing growing poverty. With support from the American Rescue Plan, we could make these plans a reality and provide essential workforce development services to hundreds more county residents. There may be no time in our history when this is more needed than now as our economy and our workforce struggle to recover from the pandemic. The Rescue Plan Funds provide a unique opportunity for the county to strengthen the systems and infrastructure for the residents that our residents need to recover from the pandemic, and in particular, to directly attack the issue of growing of poverty in suburban counties or suburban communities. So thank you for recognizing this and including in the plan, these significant funds to expand affordable housing and strengthen human services and workforce development. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Zink.
Up next, we have Todd Palmer, followed by Artworks.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you very much for hosting this community forum today. Greatly appreciated. This is Todd Palmer. I'm the CEO of Great Parks of Hamilton County. And we just want to thank you for your consideration as an external stakeholder in the Rescue Plan funding. I also just want to quickly thank Jeff Administrator Alito for meeting with me in advance and listening to things that we had to share and providing some early feedback. It was very helpful in this process. So thank you. I touch base on a couple of items today. Great Parks has not received federal funding yet as any results of the pandemic. We did apply for FEMA funding, and our application was denied. We plan to appeal. We were not eligible. Park districts and special districts were not eligible. We are excluded from CARES Act funding, so there was no ask to make there. But we feel very fortunate and honored to be considered as a part of Rescue Plan funding. Our revenue losses for 2020 were near $2.5 million, and earned revenue is a separate component of our budget. As many of you know, we are not just tax funded. We do receive up to 35% of our revenue through earned revenue. And all those facilities were closed, and the revenue was lost and not recovered. If we're able to receive that recovered revenue, there are some great things we can do to invest in the public assets in our community that would benefit the community, things like access to parks, connecting to nearby communities, enhanced links to public transportation, recreational amenities. Everyone loves the playgrounds we have in our parks, and they serve very large communities. We would love to expand our program to reach larger, more diverse audiences, such as our Kids Outdoor Venture Expo that we host in Witten Woods, which we'll bring back after the pandemic pushes through. And then environmental projects. You know, we're a conservation-based agency, and we can do some significant transformative environmental projects. So, thank you all for your time. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Next up, we have Artworks, followed by Jason Harris and John Putnam.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your time today. I am Sidney Fine, Senior Director at Impact for Artworks. I am here today to ask for your support of a youth employment plan for Hamilton County that includes the opportunity to beautify our community and enhance civic pride for all of its residents. As you know, nearly one in four children live in poverty in the county, and 28% of young people have experienced COVID-related unemployment more than any other age group. While Artworks is known for our monumental murals, at our heart, we are a youth employment program for 14 to 21-year-olds who create art that is celebrated across the nation. In our 25th year, we are a proud, inclusive, and equitable employer with a strong track record of hiring a diverse demographic primarily from the city. The majority of apprentices come from underserved households, and many are significant earners for their families. An apprenticeship provides the opportunity to earn a paycheck and gain career readiness skills with an emphasis on creative thinking, collaboration, problem-solving, goal-setting, and building social capital. With an investment of $300,000 of ARPA dollars, Artworks could expand employment opportunities for Hamilton County residents living outside the city to work on civic projects where they live. We could create four permanent murals chosen through an equitable selection process for communities outside the city to get more public art while also employing youth from the area. This investment would provide jobs for 40 youth apprentices and professional artists with murals that enhance civic pride and create economic opportunity. We are looking to grow our past county successes, which include murals in Lincoln Heights, Silverton, Finney Town, Springville Township, and others. Opportunities for our county's young people are hard to come by. The demand for our program is so high that only one in four applicants to our program are hired each year. So thank you for believing in the dreams of young people and for your consideration of the Artworks County mural program.
Thank you, Sidney, for representing Artworks.
Thank you. Commissioner, next up is Jason Harris, followed by John Putnam and Marcus Thompson.
Hi, I'm Jason Harris, Director of Strategic Operations at Living Arrangements for the Developmentally Disabled. I also have a master's degree from Syracuse University in Disability Studies and worked at the think tank, as well as being an autistic person. I'm talking today about LAD, smart, tech-enabled, smart, and community-based support. We tend to sometimes not think of people with disabilities in underserved communities, but it's one of the large, it makes up about 20% of the population of the United States. It goes across all races, genders, sexualities, and so forth. It tends to be that even though there's a lot, there's sometimes things on affordable housing, we don't know much. There's not as much on affordable and accessible housing, as well as making sure that supports are there to live, work, pay taxes, and thrive in the communities, especially with people with disabilities sometimes having sort of financial restrictions on how much they can have with services and be able to keep some of those things. But LAD is trying to do, in my opinion, based on my own personal experience, and based on things as revolutionary to make it that people can be in the community, can live their lives, get support, and still be able to do what they need to be able to do, but also is making it better for the people who are supporting people to be able to do more of what they want to do. I know for myself, I'm looking to do some of these services because even though I tend to be skeptical of some of the service models, I think this is something that could be game-changing for my own life, let alone the disability community as a whole, to be able to be more integrated into the community. I want to thank you so much for hearing me. I hope you have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, for representing LAD.
John Putnam is up next, followed by Marcus Thompson and Arlene Koth.
Good afternoon, and thank you. My name is John Putnam. I'm Director of Unicity, the Smart City Division of Cincinnati Bell. According to the U.S. Census, most of Hamilton County's low and moderate-income neighborhoods, the percentage of residents without internet is 33%. From education to healthcare to employment, this gap in internet connectivity has a deep impact. In the last year, we've partnered with many jurisdictions to leverage CARES Act and CBDG funding, CDBG funding, excuse me, to provide public Wi-Fi to more than 1,500 public housing units and a total of 800 Wi-Fi hotspots in Kenton County, Hamilton County, and Montgomery County. Through our Wi-Fi software, we have the accountability to show that thousands of people across a wide age range are using tens of thousands of internet sessions on the Wi-Fi we provide every single day. But what really sets our solution apart is that in addition to providing free internet access via public and private partnerships, our intelligent Wi-Fi platform provides a way for us to engage and communicate with residents to improve the quality of their life. We can deliver COVID vaccine information to groups that are underrepresented in getting their vaccines. We can help women who are pregnant or mothers get prenatal and infant vitality information to help eliminate childcare deserts. We can connect people who, due to COVID, are in need of help with rental assistance programs. We provide people with the opportunity to apply for jobs and participate in job training from their home. And of course, school-aged children can use it for remote schooling, or if in school, continue the education process after three. I want to applaud the Hamilton County Commissioners for having the vision to set aside $10 million of the ARPA monies to help attack the digital equity problem. All of our projects align with the Treasury guidance recently released, and Cincinnati Bell is committed to continuing to partner with federal, state, local governments, school districts, private entities, and we look forward to helping Hamilton County address digital equity issues. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Putnam.
Thompson is next, followed by Arlene Koth and BGC Cincinnati.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I thank you for holding this forum, as well as the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Marcus Thompson, and I am the President of the Board of Commissioners for Great Parks of Hamilton County. And I just want to briefly follow up on the comments that our CEO Todd Palmer made just a little bit ago. So studies have shown that the benefits of parks and being outside and connected to nature, these benefits, if you've been to parks, are not just physical, but mental as well. And we saw this in 2020 during COVID, when we had a 62% increase in trail usage. And that increase has actually continued into 2021. We understand the need of our county's residents in regard to parks, and we want to continue to be there for them. And so recovering the revenue loss from the pandemic is an investment in our communities for generations to come. And so, again, I just wanted to be brief, but wanted to make sure that I said a few words, and greatly appreciate you taking the time to listen. And we look forward to further discussions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Arlene Koth, followed by BGC Cincinnati and Jaron McKnight.
Good afternoon. My name is Arlene Koth, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of LAD. I serve in the capacity of a LAD board member and as a consultant focused on equity. Since becoming a part of the LAD team, I've led much of the work of ensuring that as a workplace, we are equitable and ultimately our services are equitable. What we've discovered in our work is that while our Black community experiences disability on par with other communities and members of this community are registered to receive services within the Hamilton County Board of Developmental Disability, the Black community is accessing significantly less services than their white counterparts. This profoundly impacts our collective community, whether it's people staying home to provide care and limiting their own income to do so, or whether it's Black people with developmental disabilities wanting opportunities to live fully and engage in fulfilling work. We must figure out a way to connect LAD and the service providers to the Black community in our city. As we assess the disproportionate impact on our community of the pandemic and the failure of services to reach all communities equitably, we ask the county to continue to support this new service model that will profoundly and positively change the lives of people with disabilities and our aging population. A one-time investment allows us to not only bring beautiful housing and cutting-edge supports into our underserved and marginalized communities, but also provides opportunity and hope for families who have until now not been able to access services and well appointed affordable housing for their loved ones. This is an opportunity to truly model what an inclusive and equitable county really is. Thank you all for your leadership and your vision during these trying times, and of course, for your support of the LAD Forever Home Project.
Thank you, Ms. Koth.
Next, followed by Jaron McKnight and Jamelle Weathers.
Well, you say BGC Cincinnati?
Correct.
That's right. I didn't hear. I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Commissioners. My name is Bill Brester. I'm the CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Cincinnati. I'm here to talk about COVID and the negative impact it's had on our kids. After a year of virtual school and social isolation, it's had a large impact on the social, emotional, and mental health, as well as the academic health of our students. For over 80 years, the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Cincinnati has met these challenges, met these needs for our kids. But of course, the need is greater than ever now in the wake of COVID. I'm requesting that the county consider $200,000 in ARPA funds to support our students' mental health and social, emotional competencies through our graduate Fit for Life, Ready to Serve program that we conduct every day, maintaining our 1 to 15 staff-to-member ratios, small group mentoring environments. It would support the delivery of trauma and form care training for our staff. It would support the training of classroom management through the youth program quality intervention methodology developed by the Whitekirt Center for Program Quality for our staff. And that funding would also support maintaining partnerships that allow us to link our students to counseling and case management services. We're seeing a huge need We're seeing a huge need as we enter our summer and expand our programming back to kids this summer and into next school year. We anticipate serving in Hamilton County about 1,000 kids between June 1st and the end of next school year. So, this would be vastly important here to consider, and I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bresser.
Next up, we have Jaron McKnight, followed by Jamelle Weathers and Marcus Margerum.
Good afternoon. My name is Garen McKnight. I'm a Cincinnati Symphony Orchestra Board Member and Arts Wave Community Campaign Cabinet Member for this year. I'm here to advocate on behalf of the CSO for the use of federal relief dollars to benefit arts organizations. Many misunderstand what the "arts" in quotes are. Arts organizations are similar to the other shuttered small businesses and suffering service industries like restaurants and bars. Arts organizations employ and support a substantial amount of our community, and like employees in other industries, there's been substantial job and income loss in the arts sector. LAD's creative industry has the highest unemployment rate among all sectors, 26% as of February 2021, which was nearly twice that of the restaurant industry at 14%. Specifically related to the CSO, by the time pandemic restrictions are over, we will have lost $15 million of ticket revenue. That calls for extensive budget cuts, possibly including employees. I know this firsthand. I'm a labor and employment lawyer, and I handle reduction and force issues. When the CSO cuts jobs, cuts performances, makes pay cuts, it diminishes tax revenue for Hamilton County. It also deeply impacts the small businesses who rely on CSO concert activity over their eye in the community where I reside. To bring the economic point home, prior to COVID-19, Cincinnati's arts sector generated $300 million of economic impact, supporting nearly 10,000 jobs, and added $14.2 million to local government revenue, let that sink in. Additionally, the CSO is a community asset. I'm a transplant, and I found Cincinnati's vibrant and accessible arts community, including the CSO, to be a major selling point to settle in down here. Cincinnati's arts and culture sector is the envy of other major cities in the country, and it's in peril as the pandemic shut the sector down. Without this funding, the arts fabric may unravel, setting the sector back for years. Investing and preserving these assets will help the larger community recover and reveal why this community stands out. I want to commend the Commissioners for your strong position on arts funding, the $2 million that's been recommended so far, because you understand a critical position to helping the arts community is helping Cincinnati at large. Thank you for your time, and thank you in advance for your continued support of the arts in Cincinnati.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight.
Next up, followed by Marcus Margerum.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your time today. My name is Jamelle Weathers, and I'm the Principal of Pleasant Run Elementary School. I've been in education since 1998, and in the 20-plus years, there have been many changes, but the increase of students with mental health needs and the exposure to incidents of trauma has increased exponentially. This last year of COVID, of the COVID uncertainty, has not helped to minimize the concern. I'm passionate about addressing mental health of the youth topic because it has impacted many of my students, but also special children in my personal family. When students struggle and the staff works to help and parents are there to support but are told that there are multiple months of wait because of lack of mental health providers, it's disheartening and frustrating for all. I encourage Hamilton County to fund mental health supports for the youth. Specifically, Grantis Hope, the Hope Squad, have been introduced to our school this last year. The students are writing this year to request participation for next year. They are excited to help teach their peers and lead support and celebrate helping others in the classroom and throughout the whole school community. The practice of leadership, practicing recognizing students who are struggling, and even when and when not to report situations to a trusted adult, are skills that our students are now being exposed to through our curriculum and literature. Our students love the Hope Squad. Reaching our youth at the elementary level, we are being proactive instead of reactive to the mental health issues that we know exist. Thank you to Grantis Hope, Best Point, and YWCA, who also layer supports directly in our school. Thank you for your consideration in supporting children with mental health.
Thank you, Ms. Weathers.
Marcus Margerum is up, and that's followed by the Heights Movement.
Can I hold on for one second? Jackie, I see the clock in my box. Does that mean that time is up, or are you going to still do the beep for me?
I've been doing the beep.
Yeah, so I don't know what the clock came. Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry, Bridget.
Marcus, you're up.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Madam President, fellow Commissioners, my name is Marcus Margerum. I'm the Deputy Director and Chief Business Officer for the Contemporary Arts Center. The Contemporary Arts Center provides experiences through exhibitions and performances, as well as educational and outreach programs, to engage and interact with the art, artists, and ideas of our time. Pre-pandemic, we served over 150,000 visitors. Because of the pandemic, of course, we had to close down, like a lot of other arts venues, which has led to over almost a 50% decline in our revenue. We've had to furlough and eliminate staff positions. Remaining staff positions, their salaries have been decreased by 10% or more, depending on their level, as well as we've had to extremely limit our restaurant, retail, and venue rental programs, which help us with our earned income potential. This has been extremely difficult to maintain during this timeframe. However, we have remained open when we could legally because of temporary closures. We're slowly starting to reopen, which we're extremely excited about, but as we move into our fiscal year '21, we recognize there's going to be a huge operating income gap that we're looking to fill. We'd like to bring all of our staff members back up to their previous salaries, and we'd like to also continue to serve the thousands of teens and students and young adults that we have continued to serve during the pandemic via virtual programs. We would like to bring those, allow those students and young adults to come back to our facility so that they can learn and gain information about the arts. We appreciate the fact that the American Rescue Plan will offer arts and cultural assistance to the various communities, and look forward to your, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Margery.
Next up, we have the Heights Movement, followed by Satchid Margarina, followed by Brennan Grayson.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dorance Daniels. I'm the Executive Director for the Heights Movement. The Heights Movement is a nonprofit organization that is here to inspire, engage, and empower the residents of the Village of Lincoln Heights. As you all know, that we, as you all know, there's a gun range right outside the Village of Lincoln Heights, and we definitely support, and we appreciate you all, and we support the proposal that is on the table for the removal and move of the gun range. The residents of the Village of Lincoln Heights, we appreciate you hearing their needs and understanding the impact that this gun range has had on the residents for the past 75 years. As you all know, Lincoln Heights is the first African-American community above the Mason-Dixon Line. We're a true gem in Hamilton County, and we've had some great, you know, historical figures come out of this community. And we are looking forward to future days where, you know, our kids can wake up and our residents can wake up without hearing gunshots every day. You know, once again, we appreciate you all for, you know, putting this proposal, and the residents of Lincoln Heights definitely support it. Secondly, we also want to say we support a youth employment plan for Hamilton County with Artworks as well. I know Ms. Sidney just came on as well, but the communities of Hamilton County, especially those like Hamilton County, especially those like Lincoln Heights, are in need for additional public art opportunities. We had our Black Excellence in Zone 15 mural where it's displayed. A lot of those great residents have come from the Village of Lincoln Heights, and our partnerships with those like Artworks and Arts Wade, especially Artworks, have been very invaluable, I mean, very valuable. So, once again, please continue to support them as well, and also support innovation and workforce development in the Village of Lincoln Heights, as well through the Heights Movement and our plan that we have proposed. So, thank you all again for supporting the move of the gun range and all the work that you all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels.
Next up, Satchid Mocharina, and then we have Breanna Grayson.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Sachi Mocharina. I'm 17 years old, and I'm a youth artist with Artworks. I have been an Artworks apprentice since 2020, and this has been my first-ever job. Last year, we worked on an animation project called Our New Normal, where we created stop-motion videos. My artwork is now a part of the new Artworks Youth Gallery called Student Power, led by the artist Terrence Hammond. I will be working as a gallery intern, and I will be on the upcoming John Ruffin Mural Project in Milford. My participation in Artworks has been amazing this past year. Artworks has provided me so many great opportunities to grow. I learned more about public speaking, financial literacy, and how to handle conflict and the importance of mental health in the arts. I am here to support additional funding for Artworks for the American Rescue Plan funding so that other young people like me can have the same opportunities I have had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mocharina.
Next up, we have Brennan Grayson, followed by Lauren Hannan Schaefer.
Oh, hello, Commissioners. Thank you for having me on. My name is Brennan Grayson. I'm with the Cincinnati Interfaith Worker Center. We represent and advocate for low-wage and immigrant workers in the city, and I wanted to ask the Commissioners and really everyone on this call, just to take a moment to think about an essential worker that you know. Maybe somebody in your life you can picture them. You know, what are they doing? Where are they working? Where have they been working all these months? They need rescue and repair, and they need support, and I thank you Commissioners for putting together a really great process for the public to appeal for ways that you can show your support for essential workers and for getting the economy and getting working people back to a good place. If you're like me, the essential worker that you picture is a line cook. I have two coworkers, Manuel and David, here at the Worker Center, and they both worked as line cooks before they came to work here with me on workers' rights. And I learned something about line cooks very recently. There was a study in California that showed that the highest mortality rate for any job during the COVID pandemic was line cooks. They had a 60% increase in mortality. The other ones with high mortality rates under COVID were warehouse workers, agriculture workers, bakers, and construction workers. These are the folks that I hope you will think of ways to prioritize with ARPA funding. I would encourage you all to think of ways that the workforce development dollars could be used to help workers know, you know, to be trained on their rights, to understand how they can help make their work environment safer, how they can raise their own wages. And I'd encourage you to look for ways to support their right to counsel. Low-wage workers of all races and genders have the right to talk with the lawyer, to get advice about how to confront the conditions on the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grayson.
Hannan Schaefer is up next, followed by Harold Howard.
Hey there. I'm Lauren Hannan Schaefer. I'm Vice President of the Board of Artworks. I'm here today to ask your support of expanding youth employment for all these wonderful young people in Hamilton County through the American Rescue Plan funding. I'm involved with Artworks because of the incredible opportunity Artworks provides to these young people. We connect these youth directly with jobs. These dollars are about economic recovery, and we have the infrastructure already in place to hire these kids to do jobs that they can actually be proud of. These kids have taken an emotional hit with COVID and have been alone in their homes. These are jobs that instill confidence as they learn to speak in public, work as a team, and actually create something that makes their neighborhood feel with pride as well as their own pride. These kids work with mentors and are surrounded by positive role models and youth from all over, something that they have not had access to, especially in this past year. This is way more than an average job. This is a chance to put dollars back in the pockets of those who are fighting to survive, help with their mental health, and boost all of their life skills. These young people have such potential, and I see the difference every year when we get more apprentices hired. Their outlook changes, and they are proud to be part of something so much bigger than themselves. I'm inspired by these youth apprentices every day, and they touch my heart. We have the opportunities. Help us hire these kids. We don't want to turn any more kids away, as Sidney had referred to. With an investment of $300,000 ARPA, we can hire more young people, those who have had the most to lose during this COVID pandemic. We will access, they will all have access to the amazing program that Artworks provides. Thank you for your time and your support of expanding Artworks within Hamilton County. I look forward to our partnership. Let's get these kids working. If you help us with the funds, we will get their jobs, and they can start being proud of themselves and help the community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer.
Next up, we have Harold Howard, followed by Paul Hafner and Kelly Smith Trundle.
Thank you, Madam President, and Commissioner Reese and Treehouse for your thoughtful considerations for spending the American Rescue Plan funds. My name is Harold Howard. I am the Vice President of Community Care for Tower House. We appreciate the opportunity to participate in the County Administrator Session to seek stakeholder input. In addition to my role at Tower House, I also, I'm also here as a member of the Human Service Chamber. As a provider of mental health addiction, housing, employment services, among others, across Hamilton County, we are very supportive of the recommendations to provide assistance to individual families and organizations that have been so severely impacted by both the Corona pandemic and the opioid epidemic. Part of my responsibilities include the oversight of the county's 281 Care 24-Hour Suicide Information Referral Hotline. Our calls are up 156% over the past year. The majority of these callers are facing mental health and substance use challenges, as well as financial insecurity. Tower House oversees the county's naloxone distribution efforts, where last year we furnished well over 8,000 naloxone kits throughout the community in response to the opioid crisis. We are very supportive of funding in behavioral health, mental health, and substance abuse response programming, including crisis services, as we work together with partner agencies and the Mental Health and Recovery Service Board to address these needs across the community. As a provider of programs to prevent and address homelessness, we appreciate your support for addressing negative economic impacts, including affordable housing. We know safe, affordable housing is the foundation for individuals and families who are working hard but still struggling to balance their most basic needs. The American Rescue Funds can provide stability and support to those we serve and allow them to recover and in turn contribute to our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Paul Hafner is next, followed by Kelly Smith Trundle.
Thank you so much, Madam President and Commissioners Treehouse and Reese. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm Paul Hafner, President and CEO of Lighthouse Youth and Family Services. I'd like to start just by thanking all of you and the taxpayers of Hamilton County. You are our biggest funder, and you have been very supportive of Lighthouse over the years, and we couldn't do what we do without you, which is to take care of the youth and young adults and the families that surround them in our county, in our Greater Cincinnati area. Lighthouse is also a member of the Human Services Chamber, and you've heard from many of our colleagues today. We support unequivocally the proposals submitted by Administrator Aludo. We find them to be very fair and balanced. At Lighthouse, I know we have a large capital project going on to double the size of our girls' residential treatment facility, which is moving from Pleasant Ridge over to Mount Auburn. That is going ahead. Throughout COVID, construction costs have gone up dramatically, but we are going to get it done in October, and we will make sure to invite the community for groundbreaking in the fall. We're also, our teen and young adult shelters, you have supported us in both of those endeavors, and we appreciate it very much. So, we look forward to the social services opportunity to prove up what we can do and, again, support the administrators' proposals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hafner.
Next up, we have Kelly Smith Trundle, followed by Laverne Mitchell and Michael Fee.
Good afternoon. My name is Kelly Smith Trundle. I'm the Director of Employment and Recovery Services for Greater Cincinnati Behavioral Health Services, and GCB is a member of the Human Services Chamber. Like Mr. Hafner, I'm also here to urge you to support the County Administrator's proposal for spending the American Rescue Funds to expand affordable housing and to strengthen human services. GCB is the largest behavioral health care provider in the Greater Cincinnati region. We serve people of all ages and walks of life who are affected by mental illness and addiction. As the Director of Employment and Recovery Services, I manage our employment programs in Hamilton County, our Social Security Administration PEE and Benefit Specialist Programs in both Hamilton and Claremont Counties, and I'm also the clinical supervisor of our Kemper House located in Walnut Hills that is a step down from hospitalizations. I say all that to illustrate that I have seen how the COVID pandemic has impacted people in multiple settings and multiple situations. I've also seen how funding for housing and human services organizations can really make an impact on people's lives and help us all recover from this pandemic. I also urge you to please make these funds as flexible as possible. Administrative processes and requirements slow things down and make providing these desperately needed services take longer. People come to us when they need help, requiring additional things from them. Requiring additional things from them means that they end up falling off, falling through the cracks and don't get the services that are needed. As much money that's pouring into our communities, it won't make an impact if we can't use it on the, on what our communities need. How does the saying go, right? If I teach a man to fish, he'll eat for a day. If, I mean, I'm sorry. I give a man a fish, he'll eat for a day. If I teach a man to fish, he'll eat for life. Investing in human services allows our human services industry and nonprofits to teach a man to fish or to teach a man to live successfully in the community or to teach a man how to be successful on the job, whatever the quote "man" needs. I guess I probably should have used a better analogy than a man, right? I believe I'm preaching to the choir, and I thank you all for your time.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Trundle.
Yep, we have actually, Michael Fee, followed by Austin Riley III.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Fee. I am the High School Counselor at Summit Country Day School here in the city. One of my primary roles, I serve as our advisor for our Hope Squad Program. I want to speak to the importance of mental health and funding for mental health in our schools and our city. We unfortunately had a student suicide about four years ago, and I searched around for programming to help support our student body. And what I was able to, to find was a local organization, Grantis Hope, or Grantis Hope, who had brought in the Hope Squads from Utah. What attracted me to this program, that it is completely student-led. I, as a counselor, serve 400 students, and it's impossible for, for all of our counselors in our schools to, to track and follow their entire student body. So this program is designed to empower the students to recognize suicidal ideations and, and peers who are struggling with mental health issues and to be the first to intercede with, with them. The, the program itself has a great curriculum that teaches the students how to, to intercede with their peers, how to involve their advisor in, in getting help for the students, and then hopefully applying the, the services that can be provided to them throughout. Not only does it help to recognize, but the students are responsible for it, simply just spreading hope in our school buildings, something that we know that our students need. I do want to say that my referrals for students have tripled over the past three years when this program is brought to, to me. That is actually a good thing. We are now catching students who are struggling, whereas before, those students were often overlooked and would did not receive the interventions that they needed. Programs like this are important. Thank you for the time today. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Fee.
By Austin Riley III. Laverne, you're unmuted on my end.
Thank you. President Dumens, Commissioners Reese and Treehouse, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak today. I am Laverne Mitchell, and I'm a council member for the village of Lincoln Heights. Today, I am advocating for more affordable housing in my community. The council of the village of Lincoln Heights and the port are aware of the affordable housing crisis we face in Hamilton County and in particular in Lincoln Heights. So we are working together to address this issue. As part of our partnership, we are in process of developing a memorandum of understanding to capture how the port will work hand in hand with us to accomplish this. Included in this MOU are details on how the port will assist the village of Lincoln Heights in acquiring, you know, as we call stuck properties, properties that may be listed in the name of a defunct organization or another entity. And you know that this will require many man hours just to legally acquire the property. Um, acquiring these properties will help us increase our housing stock in the village. So I'm happy to say that within the next 30 days, the HERC, which is managed by the port, will break ground on this first new construction in the village on Jackson Street. Now, of course, this is not the first affordable housing work in Lincoln Heights. So I would be very remiss if I did not thank the county for the home funds that were awarded to the HERC for the construction of the four new houses on Jackson Street as well. So by partnering with the port, we're, we're making a difference in the lives of so many. So we do appreciate your assistance, and I hope, this doesn't sound ungrateful, but we can always use more resources. More funding like this will assist our village in executing our housing plans in the future of our neighborhood. And additionally, we want to thank you for your bold leadership on the move to remove the gun range. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mitchell.
Austin Riley III is next, followed by Mark Lawson and then Barbara Bush.
Good, good afternoon, members of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners. I hope you guys are all doing well. My name is Austin Riley III, and I'm here on behalf of the Cincinnati U.S. Regional Chamber of Commerce. And we at the Chamber recognize the opportunity that you have to help Hamilton County bounce back from the negative economic impacts caused by the pandemic. We understand that what sets our region apart are the many businesses and cultural activities that are offered. By allocating funding that helps our local business re, helps our local business reignite the arts and helps to drive hospitality and tourism, we know that we can start to help families and individuals get back on track and push our local economy to where it was before COVID-19. Knowing that many of our small and minority-owned businesses are in need of critical support, it is vital that these firms receive all the assistance they need in order to keep their doors open, keep their employees in jobs, and remain competitive. Along with direct business support, we commend the identification of funds directed towards workforce development and worker training. The Chamber's Workforce Innovation Center is uniquely positioned to assist in these matters, and we will be pleased to continue this conversation with the Commissioners. We also applaud your investment in housing. At the Chamber, we recognize the need to tackle our housing shortage from every angle with a broad coalition to ensure that we're developing the right mix of housing opportunities that allow our region to grow. Finally, the city of Cincinnati stands ready to be a partner with you all, and as we work collectively to mitigate the negative effects of the pandemic and help to better our region back better than it was before. Thank you guys for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Next up, we have Mark Lawson, followed by Sister Barbara Bush and Alan Woods of Mortar.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Commissioners Reese and Treehouse. I appreciate the time today, and I want to thank the three of you and your wonderful administration, especially Jeff Aludo and Holly Christman, for putting together such a thoughtful plan that we think accurately reflects the needs in the community. As you all know, we have, you know, many deep programs in many of the areas outlined in the plan, such as workforce development, childcare, small business grants, transportation, youth employment. So I could talk about all of that, but there's no time, so I want to focus on the $5 million allocated for homeowner assistance. As you all know, we received about $60 million in emergency assistance since the start of the pandemic. And for context, that's, in a normal year, we would allocate about $250,000. We've already expended $8 million and helped stabilize 3,500 families in their homes. We do have about $50 million, which is a bonkers number, honestly, for rental assistance. So we're good there, and you're right not to put that in the plan. I think we're fine. We only have $2.7 million left in homeowner assistance, however, which is not enough. And as the plan states, OFA did receive about $281 million for homeowner assistance. I'm just not sure how well that's going to work. They're going to administer the homeowner assistance, the mortgage assistance centrally through Columbus, and I'm not sure how well that's going to, going to flow to homeowners in Hamilton County. I'm also worried because they're bifurcating the assistance between mortgage assistance and utilities plus, is what they're calling it. So they're carving out $5 million for things like utilities, property tax, arrearsages, and HOA fees. So it's not great, I don't think, to send people to two different places for different things that affect those homeowners. And they're, they're thinking about running that $5 million through the CA network. And I have a meeting next week on behalf of the statewide CAs with OFA to see whether that's going to work for us to administer the $5 million, which is nowhere near enough, by the way. So I hear my time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Followed by Alan Woods of Mortar and Tony Staubach. Barbara Bush, you're unmuted on my end.
Sorry. From working in neighborhoods, and I want to say thank you for the time. I'm specifically interested in, I, I absolutely agree with Mark. We need money for foreclosure prevention. But we also need to provide an opportunity for those families to actually get a decent modification on their loan. As of June 30th, the forbearance program will be over. 30% of the people who are on, have a mortgage, particularly in low-income African-American neighborhoods, are not covered under the government programs for forbearance and then move to a modification. So we're, we have a significant number of people who are going to need to negotiate with their mortgage servicers in order to be able to stay in their home. We have seen a number of, we're still, we're talking to numbers of people. We are a HUD-certified housing counseling agency. We've provided the largest number of foreclosure prevention work in the county over the last 10 years. And we are, we're concerned with the conversations we've had with our families who don't have their jobs back to where they were getting paid before. And some cannot even return to work. So somebody needs to work with these families so they don't just sign anything that comes to their table because they're so afraid of losing their home, and then they lose it. So I'd like you to consider in that mortgage money the opportunity for us to help those families to actually be able to get a mortgage that will stabilize, a modification that will stabilize them in their homes, because we cannot afford to lose any more families, homeowners, in Hamilton County. Since we lost, we have never gotten better from the last recession. So I say that to say thank you for all of your work on housing. We're enthusiastic about it, and we're perfectly willing to help. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Bush.
Followed by Tony Staubach and Margaret Fox.
Richard, we're not hearing the very first name that you say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
We can, but we're missing the very first, so we missed the name that you said first.
Okay, Alan Woods from Mortar.
Good afternoon. This is Alan Woods from Mortar, co-founder and executive director. And I just want to first off thank you for all of your support over the last seven years as Mortar has done some groundbreaking work across Cincinnati and across Hamilton County to make sure that we are making entrepreneurship accessible in minority communities, specifically for Black women, which is the number one demographic of users of our program. As we continue to move forward, last year, we were able to add Lincoln Heights and Forest Park. So special thank you for that as well. And we are currently wrapping up a cohort with those graduates. Will leave our program in about a month and a half, and about 20 new entrepreneurs will come from that cohort. So we're really excited about this. As we think about what last year meant for a lot of entrepreneurs, we understand that there were a lot that were not able to make it through the last year. COVID was really difficult for a lot of graduates or entrepreneurs. And what we'd like to report is that 100% of our graduates that were in business before COVID started were able to stay in business. So that's 100% of our graduates that were operating their business were able to keep their doors open. We were able to provide additional support, technical assistance, guidance, and some of that additional infrastructure that they need to keep their doors open. So we are thankful that we have been able to, to do that, and we are thankful for the resilience of our entrepreneurs. As we think about the ARPA funding, we would like to request funds that would assist us in helping more small businesses across Hamilton County through digital access to our curriculum. We have developed an online presence. We did our cohorts in Lincoln Heights and Forest Park virtually. And so we're looking to continue to build out that, but understanding that there is a digital divide, and there are some of our participants that have had some challenges, whether it be through broadband, broadband connection or not having, you know, more than one laptop across the house. So you have students who are using it for schoolwork, but then the entrepreneur as well. So there are a lot of different digital access capabilities that we would like to help to fix in this process. But we just want to just thank you for your ongoing support of Mortar as we continue to do that. And hopefully, through the usage of these funds, we'll be able to support more entrepreneurs across Hamilton County, specifically in Lincoln Heights and Forest Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Staubach, followed by Margaret Fox, Tevis Foreman, and Justin Jeffrey.
Hello, this is Tony Staubach, the Extension Educator for 4H Youth Development with OSU Extension in Hamilton. And I'm so happy I'm able to talk to you today. This year has obviously is a unique year for OSU Extension. And the recovery money, that's kind of a great opportunity to continue to talk about our partnership and how we can continue to work together. I thank you for all of the support that you've given us over the years. You've been able to help us this year serve 1,000 participants and donate more than $150,000 of in-kind support back to the community. But as of April of this year, we've already reached our, our, our number of 5,000 people. So we're, we're getting back into the swing of things, continuing to serve more people. But I'm a little pointed with some of our numbers because as we look at the information about who we were able to serve during the pandemic, the ones who needed our programs the most. And so coming out of the pandemic, we know that we're going to need some more support to reach out to those communities of marginalized individuals who desperately need these informal educations to develop positive relationships with adults in their communities and to continue to serve those who are the most. So I just wanted to hop on today and say thank you for your support over the years. Thank you for your support during the pandemic, and thank you for your support moving forward. And I look forward to partnering with you and, you know, achieving serving 20% of the youth in Hamilton County someday, which would be 35,000 youth. That's a farce, but we're going to get there. Again, thank you so much for everything you've been able to do for us, and thank you for everything you're doing for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Staubach.
Margaret Fox is up next, followed by Tevis Foreman and Justin Jeffrey.
Thank you for allowing the Metropolitan Area Religious Coalition of Cincinnati to speak today regarding the money set aside for addressing negative economic impact on housing. Mark is an organization. My name is Margaret Fox. I'm the Executive Director. And Mark works in the city and county and surrounding municipalities to improve public policy and in the process, to raise the level of civil discourse. So we've been in existence for 50-plus years, and for at least 25 of those years, affordable housing, homelessness, and displacement have been a part of our annual agenda. We spent a great deal of time trying to establish an Affordable Housing Trust Fund along with other organizations for the city of Cincinnati. We have waited for four years for dedicated funding in a substantial way for that fund. And we are thrilled that the county commissioners are willing to put aside $40 million for housing needs, production, preservation, and mortgage aid. And to help those families that need forbearance on their home loans and modifications of their current loans. We sit on a variety of Housing Policy Task Force and Committees, Affordable Housing Advocates, as well as Quality Housing Task Force. And we can't thank you enough for taking the issue of affordable housing seriously and for actually acting on it. So we are in full support of that dedicated $40 million from the American Rescue Plan Fund. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fox.
Next up, we have Tevis Foreman, followed by Justin Jeffrey.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Madam President and distinguished Commissioners. I'd like to thank you all for your time this afternoon and for how smooth of a process this has been. Kudos. It's well done. My name is Tevis Foreman, and I serve as the Executive Director of Produce Perks Midwest. We are a Hamilton County nonprofit and serve as Ohio's lead agency administering nutrition incentive programming. Our work addresses food insecurity, chronic disease, and infant vitality for low-income households countywide. We do this by providing direct financial resources to purchase healthy foods, specifically fruits and vegetables. Our program experienced a 96% increase in utilization due to the pandemic. In 2020, we generated over $3 million in healthy food purchases statewide. These dollars are going directly back into high These dollars are going directly back into high-needs communities, stimulating local economies and supporting healthy food purchases. We continue to see decreases in various biometric health indicators, reductions in A1Cs, decreases in BMIs, reduced visits to the emergency room. More so of the patients we served within our Infant Vitality Program, over ninety-five percent of the babies born met all of the biometric goals as set by the Ohio Department of Health, gestational age, gestational weight, and so forth. And over eighty-five percent of the participating mothers were minority women of color. Our request will fill an immediate and urgent need in our communities, expanding to neighborhoods such as Lincoln Heights and will directly support, I mean directly support, healthy food purchases, specifically fruits and vegetables for food insecure families across our county. We serve individuals who receive SNAP and pandemic EBT benefits, TANF-eligible households, and food insecure patients experiencing chronic disease, pregnant women, and WIC-eligible mothers. Our work is recognized nationally by the USDA and CDC, Ohio's State Health Improvement Plan, the Health Policy Institute of Ohio, and our Regional Community Health Needs Assessment. All recommend nutrition incentive programming as a key strategy to increase food security and improve health outcomes. Our request is in direct alignment with Treasury guidance and will directly support the fruit and vegetable purchases for low-income households. I thank you for your time today and for this process as a whole, and take care.
Thank you, Mr. Foreman.
Up is Justin Jeffrey, followed by Alicia Kitner.
Good afternoon. Uh I'd like to say that I'm very pleased to see a historic uh group of females leading Hamilton County. I am proud to be a Hamilton County resident right now because of the the leadership that's going on. Um the priorities are very, very good, um and it's refreshing. And I would also like to thank all the county staff that has worked so hard. I recently co-founded a group called Cincy Flush and we're affiliated with the the group in Portland that did the Portland Lou. Uh Flush stands for Public Hygiene Lets Us Stay Human. There is no more urgent and immediate need than the needs that we all face as human beings every day. And as you go through your day, I hope that you will think about this. We have a lack of public restrooms um throughout the county and in the city of Cincinnati. And so that's a real problem for people that are traveling throughout their day, whether they're bus riders or no matter what you do. It's something we all share in common as human beings is that we all have those most basic needs throughout our day. And we have a historic opportunity because of the the vote that passed issue seven. So now we have investment in our public transit system that is historic. And we have an opportunity to partner with Metro and Sorda to bring more investment throughout the community, throughout the county, our business districts, along our bus stations. For instance, in Northside, the community wants there to be a public restroom by the bus station. Um Metro has limited dollars, but this is an area where the county can lead. And we can have public restrooms throughout our business districts, throughout the entire county. We can bring um basically, we can meet people's needs throughout our entire county. And I look forward to working with you all on this. It will take funding. So the Portland Lou, there's an example of it at Smale Park. Willie Carden uh saw the wisdom of this type of investment and put it in Smale Park right by Bengal Stadium. Uh we need a lot more of these throughout downtown. Uh just walk over to the courthouse and we already walked through the alleys of the city of Cincinnati or throughout our entire county. And you will see that this is a need that is urgent. This is a need that affects every human being in our county. And I urge you all to look into the Portland Lou. I have attached the website, Cincy Flush. And I look forward to talking with you all further about this. And I again want to applaud the residents of Hamilton County and you all for your leadership. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey.
Last hand raised. So if anyone else would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. But Alicia, you are unmuted.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Alicia Kitner. I'm president and CEO of Arts Wave. I'm going to talk about something so different than the last speaker. Uh but I want to thank you for the thoughtful way you're soliciting input about potential high-impact uses of American Rescue Plan dollars. I hear often from the sixty-some arts and cultural organizations that received grants from your allocation of CARES Act funds for arts relief last fall. And they've called it a lifesaver, literally the assist that kept them in business. And yet the pandemic's challenges continue. And so we thank you for also continuing to see the significant challenges that are faced by Hamilton County's arts and culture sector. The arts were among the first small businesses to be forced to close with the government mandated shutdown. And they are likely to be among the last industry group to recover. In fact, economists say it will take at least until two thousand and twenty-four to get budgets and revenue in sync with expenses of restarting the arts and re-engaging audiences and community. If approved, ARP dollars for the arts will have a high return on investment in terms of jump-starting our region's economy and bringing people back together after months of isolation. We'll use the arts funding in a way that complements but does not duplicate the allocation made by the city of Cincinnati. Not only do we have the opportunity to shore up the hardest-hit arts institutions, but we can also build the capacity of neighborhood art centers that continue to serve the community even during the pandemic. And they did this without tuition or workshop income or their normal school contracts. These neighborhood art centers serve important functions with youth and families in providing quality educational experiences, often for underserved populations, and by improving the safety and livability of our communities. We can also help restore the creative workforce through a restart of paid apprenticeships and internships. This is a key part of the business model for many arts organizations, but these jobs were also among the first to be cut. We must rebuild our creative workforce to pre-pandemic levels and commit to growing it because our arts industries help the region attract new business, talented employees, and tourists. Arts Wave is prepared to assist the county in any capacity and to ensure equitable and productive distribution of funds as your local art service provider. And so on behalf of the one hundred-plus arts organizations and many independent artists that we work with, we thank you for considering um this important support for the arts as recommended by the county commissioner. Thanks and have a great long weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Kentner. Bridget, is that the last speaker?
I believe we have one more. Julie Wyoming from Fine Arts. Julie, you're unmuted on my end.
Thank you. My name is Julie Collinsworth. I am the executive director of the Wyoming Fine Arts Center. And it's nice to go after Alicia because I can say how important the Hamilton County Acts Fund was to our organization. I started three weeks before the pandemic, so as a new executive director, it was not the ideal time to come into an organization. Um but the support that we've gotten from the county and from um the PPP loans has radically made a difference in our world. We have been around for twenty-five years. This past year was the first time we took a financial loss. We are budgeting a negative loss um for the upcoming year as well due to all the expenses associated with um the restart and getting our building available so that we could manage the the pandemic and keep our staff and um students safe. So I just wanted to say thank you for continuing to include the arts organizations in um your funding. And um we really appreciate it more than you can possibly know. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um we really thank all of you for uh your comments. Um Jess, I want to say on the side um that it came up several times about youth and work and jobs. And so just keep your ear to the ground that there's a youth job program that'll be coming forward uh in the next week or two. Um and I also want to thank you for your comments um from our last evening um hearing and for today. And I just want to guarantee, I'm making a guarantee for those who commented, not only did we hear you, but we listened to you. This is definitely a people's plan and we thank, I thank my fellow commissioners and also administration uh for moving forward on this. And we'll took, we'll take a look at all the comments uh that were given. I'd like to also ask if any of our commissioners have any final comments. It looks like we don't have any.
Uh I just want to add to that people uh who may not, well, I think everybody who participated in the in the uh public comment, but also if uh we all have uh each of us, I know, have taken notes. Uh but if there are uh some people did email us and if there's others who want to continue to email us, you can do that if you're unable to make, you know, the public hearing. And we'll uh make sure that your uh your input is also included as well. I know you had mentioned that in the last one. I just want to make sure uh we repeated it today. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I I too just want to thank everyone for participating. It's it's really important that we hear from the public. Uh there was some uh your reiteration of what's been recommended, but then some new ideas too. So it's it's very helpful. Thanks. Thanks for participating.
Okay, so at this point, I'd like to make a motion to close our public hearing.
Second.
Ms. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll move forward. Uh we have another public hearing uh to consider the two thousand and twenty-one Municipal Road Fund Program.
Oh, second.
Ms. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
I'm not sure what we're voting on.
Yeah, I didn't think we had that. That's okay.
I'm like, wait.
Oh, I just said we're gonna move right into it. That's okay. That's okay.
You can vote to open it or just open it. Either way, it's fine.
Okay.
I wanted to make my job.
Oh, thank you. Eric is chomping at the bit. Okay, Eric.
I am. I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Okay, so uh good afternoon, commissioners. I will uh I'll make this quick. This is uh the public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-one Municipal Road Fund Program. This is uh funding that the County Engineers Office administers out of the uh license plate fees that goes back to municipalities. We allocate two point one million dollars per year. We do an application period and write those applications and prioritize the projects based on six different categories. What we are presenting today is we have a list of uh the twenty-two applications that were submitted. We are proposing to fund through project number eleven, which is a uh the right above the cut line. It's actually a little bit extended. The two point one million is our is what we shoot for. And this is two million, one hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. Um I will be glad to answer any questions. This is opening it up for any public comments.
Thank you so much. Um Bridget, do we have anyone in the queue um that wants to speak on this issue?
I just put in the chat, if they'd like to raise their hands, we can call on call on them right now.
Okay, we'll wait a few minutes.
We have quite a few number of people with us, but it does not seem like anyone wants to raise their hand on this item.
Okay, very good. Um any comments from the commissioners? Vice President Reese?
Uh yes, Madam President, I just thought it might be helpful for those who are watching. Uh you said there are eleven projects. Uh am I correct, Eric?
And we had twenty-two projects that were applied for. And with the two point one million dollars, we were able to fund the first eleven.
Uh, Madam President, is there any way that Eric, if you could, you said there are only eleven. Could you just name those areas so that people know?
Sure, absolutely. Um we have Spring Grove Avenue in St. Bernard. Uh we have Compton Road in the city of Wyoming, Hamilton Avenue in Mount Haly, Elm Avenue in Terrace Park, Montgomery Road in Silverton, um Fairbanks and Delhi Avenues in the city of Cincinnati, Sharon Road in the village of Glendale, Hamilton Avenue in North College Hill, North Bend Road in the city of Cheviot, and Lee Crest Road in Woodlawn. And in addition to that, there's a million dollars that uh goes to bridge maintenance within the city of Cincinnati for counties to maintain bridges.
Thank you.
Thank you. A very diverse list for sure, as we place to locations. Um any additional comments?
Just want to thank Eric for putting that together. Thanks for the information.
You're welcome.
With uh no further comments, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Ms. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
So we have before us another hearing to consider zone, I need to put my glasses on. Zone Case Columbia, two thousand and twenty-one dash zero one from A and B Residence to DD Plant Residence, Walton Creek Multifamily. Uh the applicant is Christian Dial Dial Residential LLC, CRT Development, and the owner is CTR Development LLC. Who's speaking on this issue? Oh, Brian.
Uh yes, I I'm here. I'll be presenting uh both the zone change uh cases on the agenda today. Um I'm going to share my screen to um show some of the um. See, hopefully everybody can see that.
Yes.
Very good. Um this is the site here outlined in red. This is the subject of a zone change, as you mentioned. Madam Chairman, from A and B Residence to um DD Plant Multifamily. The house would be um raised for the development. You can see this surrounded by um single-family zoning and vacant land to the north and to the east. Um to the west are single-family homes um on the opposite side of Walton Creek Road. And then to the south, there is a gas station and kind of a junkyard um along Worcester Pike. Um a couple of pictures of the site. This is the, you can slightly kind of see the house on the left that would be torn down. So this is what's across the street. Um Pear Lane here, um this is where the proposed driveway would come in. A new bridge would be constructed to access the development, uh which we'll get to in a second. Um another view of the existing bridge, um which is a little further south than the existing house that would be um torn down for the development. Um again, this is Walton Creek here. And finally, a view looking down Pear Lane. Um this is where the bridge would come uh would be constructed and the house here would be demolished. And this is where the development would occur. So this is the plan uh for the development. It's a twenty-seven unit apartment complex um that's being proposed. Um as I mentioned, there would be a bridge over the creek here that would access Walton Creek Road um across from Pear Lane um and provide access into the development. There would be two buildings. Um there would be um parking spaces and integrated garages in some of the uh units. Um dumpsters located um in the far southeast corner of the site. Um and then retaining walls around the perimeter of the site um that you can see here. This um does require a zone change to multifamily zoning because this is an apartment complex. Um we have a process um that follows the state law um requirements, as I've mentioned to to you in previous um zone change requests. Um I did want to point out that we do have a meeting that's not required by state law that we held um for this back in February. Um it's called a public and staff review conference and something that the county instituted many years ago um outside of the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code. Um essentially to provide an opportunity for uh residents to get a heads up about a zone change that is coming down um the road um prior to getting notices for official hearings. So we do send out notices to everybody within two hundred feet. Um and it is required to occur prior to being allowed to apply for a zone change. Um so in this case, they had that meeting, but we had that meeting back in February. Uh we did send notice to everybody within two hundred feet. Um the issues that were raised at the time were um related to traffic, um the character of the area, pedestrian safety, um property values, and the concerns related to the high density of the project. The purpose of having that meeting um is to allow for those kinds of concerns to be voiced to the um staff and to the developer um prior to the start of the zone change process and to allow the developer the opportunity to make changes if necessary, um to reflect any um any changes that you'd like to make before um getting into the process. Um and it allows for all of the residents to kind of have an have an idea of who the developer is. And also we provide our contact information um to all of the residents in attendance so that they can contact us. Um, and it allows for all of the residents to kind of have it, have an idea of who the developer is. And also we provide our contact information, um, to all of the residents in attendance so that they can contact us. If they have any questions about the development, follow it through the process. In this case, we did get an application. It did proceed to the regional planning commission and rural zoning commission in April. Um, prior to those meetings, staff did review the development, um, and provided a recommendation of approval. Um, that was based on the fact that it was consistent with the adopted Columbia Township Comprehensive Land Use Plan, uh, which calls for this property and a number of the other properties in the area to be developed as multifamily, uh, which apartments would be consistent with. Also found that it's consistent with the Hamilton County Thoroughfare Plan for, um, right away on Walton Creek. Um, and generally consistent with the requirements of the zoning resolution, uh, with appropriate conditions and some variances. Mostly related to the retaining walls. There is, there were some elevations that were submitted as well. Um, these do comply with the requirements of the zoning resolution as far as height and building setbacks. So we presented our, uh, staff recommendation to the regional planning commission, um, at a public meeting on April 1st. Um, the regional planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the development, um, with no changes. Uh, the rural zoning commission held a notified public hearing, um, on, uh, April 15th, uh, where everybody within 200 feet of the property was notified. They voted three to two, um, to recommend approval of the development. They added an additional, I'm sorry, they, um, voted three to two to recommend approval as submitted by the staffs and the conditions in the staff report are included in the official recommendation from the rural zoning commission to, uh, recommend to the commission to approve this development. We also did receive a letter from, uh, Melissa Taylor with Columbia Township, um, indicating the township's support for the development. Um, and at that point, at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions. That's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Brian. Um, can you explain the, um, the three to two vote, uh, where the discrepancies or disagreement was?
He, yes, um, I believe the concern of both commissioners was traffic related. There was some discussion about, um, traffic, the, the size of the streets in the neighborhood across Walton Creek from the development. We did discuss the, um, the fact that the county engineer does review, um, any new development for any traffic concerns. If they have concerns, they do require a traffic impact study. Um, if you're required to add lanes or, uh, make any other changes to the public right of way. They require you to do that, even if it's off site, um, or they will not allow you to access the county road. That did not allay the concerns of the commissioners who voted against it, but it did for the three that voted for it. And so the official recommendation is for approval.
Okay. Thank you. I'll open it up for, um, our, my colleagues, Vice President Reese.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, so I know that, uh, we received some, uh, communications and probably all of our offices have. And, uh, um, obviously, uh, let's see, 50 West Brewery said certainly they support this initiative. There was some, a packer talk about the environmental impact. I know you briefly, uh, talked about, can you just go over that part again? Was that like a major issue that came up and, and where are we with those concerns, potential?
Sure. I apologize. There was, we did receive a lot of correspondence related to this and I did mean to mention, we did receive a petition. Um, we received it from two different people. Yeah. Ultimately, there were 17 signatures on the petition, um, from different residents. In, in addition, I did say we received correspondence from the township, um, indicating their support. The environmental concerns related to stormwater, I believe, um, I, I believe that's the, the main concern, um, as far as any environmental concerns. I don't believe that, you know, traffic pollution is, will be any worse with an apartment complex and any other development or with Worcester Pike, which is a fairly hell, heavily traveled, um, roadway, which is very close to this neighborhood. But stormwater, um, was brought up several times. Um, we have the, um, stormwater division of the planning and development department that is required to review, uh, developments before they're allowed to be built. And so all of the, um, the bridge crossings, the, how the floodplain is handled, where the water goes and to make sure that the flooding is not a concern would have to be handled satisfactorily to meet all the requirements of the county, um, as far as stormwater. And that would happen prior to being allowed to build anything on the property.
My, thank, thank you.
Thank you. Um, um, I would like to ask if I could digress, uh, that would leave to DC, she didn't get to make a comment, but I'm thinking that our residents have been waiting for so long to make a comment or ask a question. Bridget, is anyone on the line for this particular, oh, I'm supposed to ask you guys permission if it's okay to, to go to the residents? Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, Madam Pres- Yes, Madam President, uh, I believe we have Christian Dial, uh, who has his hand raised and then we have two residents on the other side as well.
Okay, let's proceed. Mr. Dial?
Hi there, Madam Commissioners. Uh, thanks for, for having us today. I won't take much of your time, but I just want to make myself available to answer any questions that may come up. Been working very, uh, closely with the staff of Hamilton, Hamilton County and the various departments to make sure that our development is complying, uh, with, with all those various departments' rules and regulations in regards to environmental impacts, um, in, in addition to stormwater. I've been very meticulous in trying to make sure that we're designing the actual building footprints to, uh, have minimal impact to the tree vegetation on the site. And also, and keep the maintain and maintain the buffers up at the front of the site by the creek. So, we want to minimize the impact there because it's a really great natural setting around the property. Um, and it really provides a unique setting for the community. Uh, also, uh, just wanted to give kind of a high level perspective of our location. As Brian mentioned, we're, we're kind of in a weird transition, uh, spot from 50, uh, US 50 and the commercial use is right there. We're adjacent to that. And then we have the green space on our side of the street, but there's also some single family residents across the street from Walton Creek. And, um, I, I've put my contact information on the first public hearing and, um, and I've had some correspondence, uh, with the neighbors, uh, the commercial properties to the east of me and then the neighbor across the street from me and just making sure that, um, I'm working in tandem with them to make sure I can alleviate their concerns there. And, um, that's, that's, uh, one thing I just wanted to mention. And, uh, again, just as questions come up, um, I'm happy to, to, uh, answer them best I can. And, and thank you again for all your time today and, uh, especially considering the, the time and, uh, the previous agenda item. Uh, I appreciate you guys fitting us in today.
Thank you. Bridget, we have additional people on the line.
We do. We have, uh, Wellesley is up first, followed by Mel Taylor and then Brian Lamar.
Hi, my name is Wellesley and I own the property at 4069 Walton Creek. Um, just wanted to thank you for your time and for listening to our concerns about this development. I did send in some photos that kind of demonstrate the little hamlet that this would affect. I'm not sure if all of you had an opportunity to see those photos. But to kind of paint the picture, the home that's going to be taken down at 4041 Creek is built in 1907. A lot of the homes in that area are built in 1903, along with a church on Elm Street built in 1910. And the historic Playhouse Theater that was a schoolhouse built in, in also in 1910. So bringing in, um, you know, a large complex that is proposed would absolutely forever change the landscape of this small little hamlet. And I think that once you start pulling into more residential areas away from the Worcester corridor, you, um, you, you take away from that area forever. So there's a lot of historic value there. And, um, just a very, very unique setting. So there's that. There's also, um, you know, to echo pollution, not just including traffic, but trash, noise and light that will inevitably be carried farther into a more residential area. One of the concerns from the commissioners that I don't think was clearly, um, explained was the environmental impact on Walton Creek itself. And one of the photos that I sent in yesterday was from one of the upstairs bedroom windows of my home. And the proposal with this development is to build a sidewalk. There is zero room between the creek bed and the edge of Walton Creek to accomplish that goal. And so I, I, I don't know how it would be possible to even build that sidewalk. That road is used by a walking, running group. It is used by cyclists. A lot of people use that road to cut in and out. So it is a heavily used pedestrian road. And now we're just going to bring more traffic onto a road that already has people usage on it. There are also children that play there that ride bikes. They skateboard. They cut through there to go to Kroger. It's just not a good idea to change the landscape of this area forever as well as the pedestrian challenges that it's going to bring. Moving that bridge up closer, um, has a couple of severe impacts to both my property and the one next to me at 4065 Walton Creek. And that Walton Creek was not built in the location that it was designed for. So therefore the road is actually laying on my parcel of land. So my land goes across the road along the guard rail. You know, so bringing a entrance of 27 units closer to my property where the road is already sitting on is not something that I'm in favor of. So I think that that is complicated a lot with the fact that there is no place for a sidewalk on a road that's heavily used by pedestrians, children and cyclists. Pear Lane is also a small lane. It is not a two-way street. Um, I can see potential problems with people trying to cut through the traffic and use that lane. I know that my neighbor is going to be building a house at 4065. And these lots do not accommodate current day setbacks and easements.
Thank you. Uh, we'll need to tie it up because it's been a little bit over two minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Apologies. Um, I, I, I just am not sure how much of this was shared with you. Then obviously there's emergency vehicle concerns, which is also written and you can feel free to read those as well. But I'm not, yeah, I don't think this has been thought through enough. Nor has it been given enough, um, consideration as to the long-term impact. And I understand that there's value in bringing in more property tax revenue. There's ample in other places to put this, but this is not the right spot for it, especially at the bottom of preserved land with heavy water runoff. You know, you're partially in a flood zone. I mean, I could go on and on and on.
Yeah.
Not enough time, but I don't think that there's been enough consideration given to complexity.
We, we certainly will look at all sides, that's for sure. And I, uh, appreciate your comments, Ms. Wesley.
Yes, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Bridget?
I'm sorry, did you hear me? Uh, next up we have, um, Mel Taylor, followed by Brian Lamar. Mel, you're unmuted on my end. Hey Mel, you want to give your audio one more try?
Her phone, I think she's logged in on her phone as well, maybe?
Says unmute my, unmute my phone, other login on the chat, Bridget.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, there's a T dial.
There's a, there's a Melissa Taylor phone backup in, uh,
All right, you found me.
I, thanks, Melissa.
Thank you all for, for saving me here. So hello again, everyone. I'm, I want to say very quickly first, I'm so humbled after listening through the American Rescue Plan and all of the needs of the county. Uh, you, you have such huge shoes to fill. And, uh, despite being in this uh, service industry of government for 35 years, I still continue to be humbled at the great work that is in front of all of us. Today on this project, I'm excited to bring to you one of the first new housing developments in eastern Columbia Township in three decades. You know, we've spoken before, Columbia Township is an urban community. We wrap around the city of Cincinnati. And like Cincinnati, we are built out, our only opportunity to stabilize population loss, attract new people is infill and redevelopment on small parcels. And that is very hard to do. It can be disruptive, but it frankly is an imperative. We have older housing stock and we lack diverse housing options. Nearly nine of 10 of housing choices in Columbia are single family. And not everyone can afford single family and not everyone chooses single family. In Hamilton County, four of 10 residents are renters. We want to invite more people to live here. Um, our population is half of what it was four decades ago. And we want them to love it the way that we do. And we want them to be able to progress from renting by choice to homeownership. And Creekside Village is a perfect example of the value of thoughtful planning, which is what we do great together, you, the county and we local government. The Worcester Pike area was formerly industrial, uh, riverfront. There was a huge concrete plant across from the neighborhood where some of the neighbors have joined us today. Their view and their noise and their traffic at, you know, many decades ago was a concrete plant and at the end of the workday taverns. And there are multiple taverns. Today, thanks to planning and zoning in the modern day, we have a corridor that is filled with small businesses. The 50 West Brewery, uh, which attracts people from not only outside the region, but also outside the state into Hamilton County. We have the Little Miami Trail. There's a brand new high school and there's a huge football field. Columbia Township has been developing comprehensive plans with you, our partner, the county since 2005. Comprehensive plans are public records that document the will of the people of the community. As President Suma Dumas said earlier, they are the people's plan. We have been planning for these opportunities since our first comprehensive plan in 2005. And if you look back at our comprehensive plans, starting in 2005 through our most recent one in 2017, there are sections on multiple pages that specifically call out the value of multifamily infill, not only for this site, but for neighboring areas. We, there's also a section that said that the neighborhood that Ms. Wellesley spoke about would benefit from buffering from the high intensity, noisy commercial. So this is all laid out in planning that has been originally done in 2005 and upheld in two subsequent comprehensive plans. As I said, that is the will of our people and there were representatives from the eastern area of Columbia Township in all of those processes. We have, as Christian Dial mentioned, given numerous opportunities to work with our residents. We truly have listened to their concerns and worked to address them. I'm a former resident of Columbia Township and I lived in this area and I understand the, the beauty of it. And Christian Dial, as a very small business builder, chose the site because it's beautiful, it's scenic, it's natural and is going to be extremely respectful of it. So I'll close and say that we've had numerous stakeholders call us, including multiple small business owners that are very excited about this new and stylish um, development and have shared their support with us. And on behalf of the Columbia Township trustees, which Brian Lamar is on next, our vice president, and the nearly 5,000 residents that our comprehensive plan represents, we ask you to partner with us through our comprehensive plan to invite this project to choose Hamilton County and Columbia Township as its home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Um, and Jackie, I'm not hearing a beep, but I'm sure that was a little bit more than, uh, two minutes.
Yeah, I, it did beep.
Okay.
I mean, I, I can only get it so.
That's okay. I usually hear it, but I didn't hear it this time. So that's okay. You're good.
Yep, we have Brian Lamar. Brian, you're unmuted on my end.
Uh, thank you, uh, President Dumas, Vice President Reese and Ms. Drehouse for your time. I'm setting my own timer, so I'll hear it myself. So I'll be brief with my remarks. My name is Brian Lamar. I'm speaking on behalf of Columbia Township. I'm currently vice president of our trustees, as Ms. Taylor mentioned. I'm also a 16-year resident of the township. And I'm not only a trustee, um, I also happen to be involved in the most recent comprehensive land use plan development that she mentioned. And, um, this project is exactly the type of project that we, that we thought was perfect for Columbia Township. And I also wanted to mention that my day job, I'm a And I also wanted to mention that my day job, I'm a market researcher, and that job entails getting feedback from groups of people um, that I engage and then make recommendations to our clients based upon that feedback. And then I found it really interesting, it's been fortunate to be part of this comprehensive plan, that it was a lot of similarities. I mean, we were very excited to talk to other residents and the township about the future of it. And um, everyone was excited, lots of participation, and we all agreed that a multifamily development in Walton Creek is exactly what we saw for the future. Um, additionally, as a trustee, we had two public meetings with our board to discuss this, and one of them, Mr. Dial presented renderings of the development. And I'm certainly confident that Mr. Dial is committed to working these, to ease these concerns of the residents like Ms. Wesley, who, who, um, spoke earlier. So I would like to say, on behalf of our trustees of Columbia Township, we're really excited and unanimous to support this resolution. And we feel it meets what we discussed at the comprehensive plan and asking for the board's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamar. Any additional, Bridgette?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Um, before I go to my colleagues, I'd like to ask Brian, um, as it relates to this hearing, um, do we have to have an additional hearing, uh, for this purpose?
It is, um, it is up to the board. Um, the public hearing is required, it is allowed to be continued, uh, if that's the, um, will of the board, or it can be closed. Today, I do not have a resolution to present to you. Um, if you close the hearing today and request a resolution, I can have it before you in two weeks.
Okay, thank you. I know some hearings we have to have too. So thank you so much for that clarity. Vice President Reese?
Uh, no, Madam President, I asked my questions, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, thank you. Um, just a couple of things I was actually going to ask um, Melissa about the comprehensive plan, but she answered my question, which was, when was it last updated? So Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, you said it was presented in two thousand and five uh, for community input, and then it was updated in two thousand and seventeen. So I think it's important for us to better understand, um, because the, these documents uh, guide development in these communities. And so when there's a comprehensive plan, I think it is a guiding document both for Columbia Township or any other township. And I think our understanding of that process is important. So, um, thank you for that, um, and thank you for kind of that timeframe there. Um, so I, I've asked Eric, I, there were some concerns, I understand, related to traffic. Um, I, I'm familiar with the area, I know it's, as described, commercial kind of on one end, it's more residential on the other end, it's got a lot of green space around it. Um, and so Eric, I was wondering if you could respond to what you heard related to this project and any changes that would be anticipated related to traffic concerns?
Sure, absolutely. We have worked, uh, with Columbia Township on this and the developer, we've looked at what they've presented. Um, that is a heavily, you know, traveled area there on, um, off Walton Creek going to Madeira and Indian Hill from Columbia Township and Anderson Township. Uh, we recommended that the access be across from Pear instead of being an offset access. The, the amount of units that they are proposing is not going to generate enough traffic, cause any issues, additional issues with the traffic there. Um, it is congested down at the traffic signal. There's just not a lot of width for turn lanes. Um, that's something that, you know, would need to be addressed later, but the, the proposed development does not add any traffic that's detrimental to what's going on out there. Um, the biggest concern is the bridge going across the creek, it would be the access point. Again, that would be inside the public right-of-way, so it would need to meet all of the county requirements. It would also probably, I, I'm not positive, but it would need a, uh, Corps of Engineer approval for the opening, the waterway opening on that. So, you know, the stormwater would be looked at from that aspect for the bridge construction. Um, the, the other streets there, they're all public streets, so, you know, all, all vehicles have access to them, they are public roads. Um, you know, we're, we will review it thoroughly in-house. You know, we will need to issue a permit for them to install within the right-of-way for that bridge, so we will be actively involved in it. Uh, the issue of the existing pavement, as I heard the property owner state being outside of the right-of-way, that, that is correct. So therefore, the pavement is there by occupation. We have the, the county has the right to operate the road because it is occupied. So we will continue to maintain and operate that pavement as is in place. Um, but her property line does extend across the pavement over to the, I guess that would be the west edge of the creek.
So just one clarifying question, Eric. So are you saying that the road that goes into the development will kind of be a through road from what already exists instead of an additional curb cut? Is that what you're saying?
It would, it will line up with Pear, which is across the street.
Okay.
They will li, they will line up, yes.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Um, and one other thing, and I, I wonder if Melissa Taylor can answer this question? Uh, because I, I'm not sure she's the one that mentioned it or someone else did. Uh, but were, Melissa, were there, um, public hearings at the trustee level related to this project?
Um, yes, well, there were public meetings, the trust, the, in addition to the schedule that Brian Snyder laid out, which included the township's first opportunity to meet with residents and Brian and his staff um, earlier in the year. We then held two meetings, uh, trustee meetings with this project on the agenda, which is broadcast to the media. Uh, and Christian Dial, uh, as Brian mentioned, presented in person just a couple of days after his baby daughter was born. Uh, uh, and we broadcast that live and also to about sixteen different media channels and also post it to our website. Um, so we did not have anyone attend um, uh, either of those meetings. And the, the trustees voted to support the project in March after the second meeting, and then it proceeded through the rezoning process with, with, uh, Hamilton County.
Okay, thank you, Madam President, that's all I've got.
Oh, no, that's fine. Um, and I have no, uh, concerns, the concerns that I had were already answered. So, uh, with all of that being said, I, uh, feel comfortable, uh, to make a motion uh, to close this, uh, public hearing.
Second. Ms. Sumaro Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brian? Madam Chair, I will have a resolution reflecting the recommendation of the Rural Zoning Commission for you in two weeks.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Dial also, and also the residents and male who commented. Okay. We'll move forward. Um, we have one additional hearing. And the hearing is to consider zone case green twenty-twenty-one dash zero-one from A Residence and E Retail to EE Planned Retail, sixty-two-hundred Harrison Retail. The applicant is Kent Arnold, Integrated Development Solutions LLC, owners T R R W B L L C and Joseph R. Flown, T R.
Very well, I'll be presenting this as well, as you stated, this is an unchanged public hearing. Um, I am going to share the screen, similar presentation as last time. So this is the property outlined in red. This is on Harrison Avenue in Green Township. Uh, this is a Lowe's development, um, that is, uh, to the south. Um, there is a, um, there's a development that is, um, single-family detached houses, but they're arranged in condominium, um, formations, so they don't have individual lots, but they are all individual, single-family homes. Um, to the, um, I guess it's the northeast and to the northwest. Um, there are some apartments that were developed as part of that same, um, Blue Lake Development, um, located here, and then, um, Veterans Park and, um, some other commercial developments are to the south of the property. Um, currently, the port, the front portion of the property is owned for retail use. There's been some non-conforming businesses on this property over the years um, that have extended back into the, um, single-family part of the property. This, um, includes two parcels. Some pictures of the property, just looking, um, across Harrison Avenue, you can see the Lowe's here. Um, the proposed development site is in this, um, area here between the apartments and the Lowe's development. Um, this is inside the Lowe's development, looking across their driveway. This is where the existing non-conforming use extends back. Um, so this is where the connection is being proposed, which I'll show in a minute when we get to the site plan. And then these are the, the nearest homes, there are three single-family houses on Blue Lake Drive. The proposed development would be in this area behind these trees here. So those three homes that were just in that picture are these three houses here. Um, the picture of the connection point to Lowe's was taken from here, looking this way. Um, this is a proposal for a, um, multi-phase, uh, commercial development um, that would be on Harrison Avenue, there would be one new driveway coming down off of Harrison Avenue. Um, this would be down into the site, sits a little bit lower. Um, so there would be some retaining walls up front, um, that would face into the site. So this would sit below, um, Harrison Avenue elevation. Um, there are some, uh, fast-food restaurants, a bank, um, and some sit-down restaurants that are proposed in multi-tenant building. Um, there's a small park being proposed in the middle, um, and then, um, obviously parking surrounding that. Um, there are some retaining walls that would face out towards the neighboring properties located here. Um, so you have the retaining walls at the front that would allow it to sit below Harrison, and then the retaining walls at the back that keep it flat, um, would drop off and face towards the residents. There is a large two-point-four acre undisturbed area that's being proposed here. Um, the most, um, sensitive area on the property is, um, its, um, border with the Blue Lakes community. Um, they had, um, a lot of involvement, the, the residents of Blue Lakes community had a lot of involvement with the Lowe's that happened next door, and I'll just go back to that. Um, they were involved in this zone change that was approved by the county several, or many years ago. Um, they did have a hundred-foot conservation easement, uh, preserved as part of that development, and they requested the same, um, for this property. The Green Township Land Use Plan calls that hundred-foot strip, um, for green space, and as you can see by the proposed plan, they are proposing to maintain that in accordance with the Green Township Land Use Plan, um, as undisturbed area. And then, um, they're adding to that, um, in this area, and then the detention basin would be, um, between the two undisturbed portions of the property. Um, the main issue that we had with this as staff when we were reviewing this, um, was with this retaining wall, and so there's, um, there's a couple of, um, different iterations of that retaining wall, I'll get into in a second, but before that, I'll go through the process. Um, similar to the previous case, this did have a public staff review conference, um, that we held with the neighbors. Um, again, we do require those to occur prior to, um, being allowed to submit for his own change. So in this case, um, the first public involvement, um, happened in January of this year. Um, we notified everybody within two hundred feet at that time um, and did hold the meeting, January twenty-first. Um, there were some residents that, um, did attend that, um, meeting. Their concerns included sight lighting, um, stormwater and the effects of the stormwater on the ponds that are, um, located throughout the Blue Lakes development. Um, parking, location of green space, retaining wall size, height, and the proximity to the adjacent homes. And then the treatment of the, of the area adjacent to their development. Those were the main topics that were discussed at that meeting in January. Um, again, the developer did, um, attend that meeting and did have a chance to, um, alter the plan as part of, um, his, his, um, development supplemental, um, prior to being, um, considered for the zone change, uh, which is the point of that meeting. Um, it did come to staff, staff did recommend approval of this development. Um, again, this development would be consistent with the adopted comprehensive Green Township Land Use Plan. As I stated, um, this area is shown as green space and the rest of it is shown as retail on their comprehensive land use plan. Um, so we felt that it was consistent with that. Uh, the proposal does include the dedication of right-of-way along Harrison Avenue in accordance with the Hamilton County Thoroughfare Plan. Um, and the proposed development would be consistent with the Hamilton County zoning resolution with some of the conditions and variances that are included in our recommendation. Uh, the Regional Planning Commission held a public meeting on April first and recommended, um, unanimously recommended approval. Um, and then the Rural Zoning Commission also held a public hearing, a notified public hearing, um, on April fifteenth and voted unanimously to recommend approval as well. Um, they did modify some of the conditions recommended by staff to reflect, um, some of the concerns raised by the township um, and those, um, that ultimately resulted in there being a total of sixteen conditions and two variances. Um, and that is what the zoning commission is recommending to you, that's their official recommendation to the board, um, is for approval with conditions and variances. One of the conditions I felt important to point out, because we have a kind of a large-scale development here, and there's not a lot of detail on, um, each of the individual buildings or the parking lot treatment. Um, staff did recommend a condition that requires each of these phases to go back to the Rural Zoning Commission uh, with their specific plans, um, for a public hearing to review um, things like building design, landscaping, lighting levels, um, and, and those kind of details. So each of these phases would go back through another public hearing, um, if the, if the commission approved the zone change with the conditions that we recommended. Um, so this wouldn't be the last time the residents would have an opportunity to, um, weigh in on each individual phase of this. Um, and then the one other issue that I wanted to bring up was the retaining walls. Uh, there is a variance because of the height of this wall being thirty feet tall. It's required to be set back six, sixty feet from the property line. Um, it was originally shown at thirty feet from the property line. Um, staff recommended, um, that adjacent to the three single-family homes, that the retaining walls start to meet the requirements. So we recommended the variance for this part, but not this part where it was adjacent to these homes. Um, the developer did propose pushing it down a little bit further. Um, and then meeting the requirements here. Um, and this is the plan that this Rural Zoning Commission recommended, the yellow line. So the, the wall would be sixty feet from the, from the residents', uh, property lines in the areas behind their houses. So, it's fairly complicated, I, I hope I presented it okay? And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Um, I, I would like to open it up to any, uh, residents or any public that are on the, in the queue to, that had some concerns or comments.
Thank you, Madam President. It looks like we have Jim Dorflin and Adam Getzmann, both with their hands raised. Jim, I'm going to unmute you on my end.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, thanks for hearing our concerns. We've not really been afforded the opportunity to meet with the developer, uh, nor our trustees. We feel like a simple walk would have sufficed. The Lowe's development next door to this proposal is a fair template for what we're seeking. I believe you've all been provided an image of the rear of Lowe's, and we appreciate that Commissioner Drehouse has seen it in person. It covers our three main concerns: environment, our property values, and quality of life. The Lowe's development includes a hundred-foot conservation easement, no variances, which seems bare minimum for pushing four fast-food restaurants, a dining restaurant, and a bank into our neighborhood. Proper visual and audible protection. There should be pines along the tops circumference of this wall for obvious reasons, as was suggested by commissioners during regional planning. In addition, the wall itself should be plantable, as is the Lowe's wall, which has made an immense difference on the impact Lowe's has had upon our neighborhood. Detention with proper filtration to protect our lakes, flora, and fauna. Integrated Development has suggested they will do bare minimum on this issue. This will destroy our lakes and all that goes with it. Odor control. For obvious reasons, Lowe's did not have to deal with this issue. Integrated Development has said there is no measurable bright line here, so they should not do any odor filtration. We had to find this zoning ordinance on our own. If this is something that is not enforced, then why is it listed in, as a regulation? This land is zone Single A. If they were building homes, we would not be having this discussion. If you were to ask a developer, why don't you just build houses on the land zone for houses? I expect the answer would be, because no one wants to buy houses behind a bunch of fast-food restaurants. Our community is not naive, we fully understand that this land will at some point be developed. We actually root for good, positive development that benefits all the township without simultaneously destroying us. For Chateau Lakes and all the surrounding neighborhoods, I'm humbly asking the commissioners to write this willful neglect of consideration shown by the developer. Please deny this zone change or at the very least delay it until the developer does due diligence, bringing us into the commission to create a win-win and ultimately occur with the Lowe's development. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to, um, just piggyback on what Mr. Dorflin said. Uh, you, Mr. Dorflin, you had said the inability to meet with the developers is there? Had you reached out to make that happen, or, or what happened?
Yes, we have. Um, we tried to, to schedule a walkthrough, uh, on this property, as I said, as we did with, uh, Commissioner Drehouse, uh, and we rebuffed on that. We were basically told, you know, we can do this online. Um, you know, and I guess what, what's frustrating- You know, and I guess what's frustrating after dealing with this thing for years, meaning going all the way back to Lowe's, is when regular citizens attend these kind of things. I mean, I'm a teacher, I've attended these meetings from my classroom, you know? And the developer's reasoning was, "We're all so busy in the evenings, including you guys, that we shouldn't meet, we don't need to meet." I just find that insufficient, you know?
So let me sort of address some of the things that Mr. Dorflin brought up. Brian, whoever can address the issues that he was concerned about, are you able to do that now?
Sure. So I've known Mr. Dorflin in some capacity or another all the way back since Lowe's, since I did work here when that went through the zone change process. A lot of the stuff that Mr. Dorflin is discussing when it comes to Lowe's came out of a settlement between Lowe's and the Chateau Lakes Homeowners Association. Those were not zoning conditions that were required by the board at the time. Lowe's in a private settlement agreement can make any concessions that they feel like they want to make, because it's a private settlement agreement. Some of those things can't be handled through zoning. As far as finding the zoning resolution online, I know Mr. Dorflin knows my name and has my contact information, and has not called me to ask me any questions about how we administer the odor controls in the zoning resolution, which we do. And there is a section of the code that does say that, and we will enforce that if odors become a concern of the residents at the time. I can get into that if anybody would like. Other than that, the developer has agreed to do gross pollutant separators in the stormwater detention areas to separate pollutants from the water that goes into the lakes. And as far as the developer meeting with the residents, we do encourage that in all cases. However, it's not required, we can't make them do that. So Mr. Kent Arnold is on the line, he is the applicant. I'm sure he can address the desire to meet with the residents. I'm not sure if I covered all of that, there was a lot in what Mr. Dorflin said, but...
Mr. Arnold, thank you, Brian. Mr. Arnold, would you like to comment at all?
Certainly, and thank you for taking the time to go through this today. I'll try to be as brief as I can, and then I'll make myself available for any further questions. But would just like to kind of give an overall picture that this PUD, as many of you know on this call, it's a two-stage process, and we're coming in for the first of two phases. And we have, you know, followed the initial adopted land use plan as discussed in the previous zoning case that you heard, that is the will of the people that was adopted in 2015, which calls for a project like this on this property. We've actually met and exceeded the guidelines for buffering and open space that were provided in that plan. As mentioned, we've made it through all the various meetings, the township trustees' meetings, Rural Zoning Commission, Planning Commission, and received unanimous approval all the way through this. And I would say that, you know, we have already met all the requirements for the first stage of this. There's a lot of discussion about wanting to talk about landscaping and stormwater, and you have here on this call, Brian and Mo from Stormwater, other experts that can speak to the fact that now is not the time that that type of issue is taken up. But we will certainly comply with and do everything that needs to get done at the right time, but we don't have those detailed plans, so we can't really discuss those items at this time. That's kind of taking that out of sequence. I would bring up that when Brian showed the initial graphic and mentioned the apartments adjacent to the site, those are actually residentially-owned condominiums. So they are technically the closest group of residents to the project. And they're ecstatic about the project, and I've met with their homeowners association president, and, you know, that we've answered all their questions, gone through things, and they're sort of delighted with what they see. I've had a great deal of correspondence, despite what you've heard with the Chateau Lakes group. A lot of it's been by email, and they initially expressed a list of about 35 concerns. Through the process, we were able to get that down to less than half of that. Once they figured out that those types of issues were non-issues and would be handled through permitting, the remaining issues fall under two categories that they have. One is which they want to talk about things that are out of sequence with respect to landscaping details and with stormwater. And now is not the time, other than we've provided the rough parameters that Brian and the others from staff had asked us to provide. We've received correspondence from your stormwater division on what the design guidelines will need to be, and we'll certainly adhere to those and any requirements of the county and the state. So, you know, we want to get into all that, as Brian said, at the right time, but now is not that time. And the second part of the requests that are open items by the residents behind at Chateau Lakes are a number of other issues that frankly, you know, are not consistent with other projects in the area. And, you know, they want me to fund their hiring of consultants to oppose the project. They want me, you know, which I can't even believe that they would say that. They want me to write them a check so that they can hire an expert to refute how we're handling stormwater, even though what we're going to be doing is designing a project with your experts at the county that really know what they're doing. So, and then also, when it comes to these items like odor control and hours of operation, they're asking me and this project to do things that aren't done anywhere else in Hamilton County or anywhere else on Harrison Avenue. So to be clear, I can show a great deal of correspondence by email saying, "I will take..." Because of COVID and kids' schedules and things, I would ask that we take on any kind of need to discuss by email, by phone, by Zoom, made myself available over and over again. I provided a 30...
Hi, I'm so sorry to bother you.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, 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 sorry. I provided a spreadsheet with 30 line items, breaking down all their concerns, and provided a forum to kind of have an organized discussion to go through their concerns. And the reason I don't... The reason I can't, you know, I don't want to meet with them is they don't like the answers that I've provided. And so for me to go meet with them without people from the township or without Mo or Brian there to really refute the fact that what I'm saying is true, that now is not the time to get into the landscaping and stormwater details, you know, meeting with these people that I've already met with, and they've time and time again told the residents that I'm not open to meeting with them, and that's not true. I have the correspondence to show that I've tried. I've got great dialogue with, you know, with the other neighbors. So, you know, I'm happy to do what needs to get done, but I've already exceeded the legal requirement for what needs to get done at this stage for this type of zoning.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold, appreciate it. I don't have any additional questions. I will open it up if you guys want to address anything to Mr. Dorflin. We don't need to do that necessarily.
Got more members of the public, Madam President.
Yeah, so we're going to move forward with our other public comments.
Adam Getzmann on the line, and followed by Edmund Zoom.
Adam Getzmann, thank you all. I know you've had a very busy day today. I've been kind of dipping in for most of the afternoon, watching some of the proceedings, so I will take too much time. I am, as many of you know, the Development Director for the township. So I was actually on staff with the township when Lowe's went through. And so since 2005, I've kind of been following this property. We probably thought that Lowe's would develop a lot, or the property adjacent to Lowe's would have developed years ago. And so for almost that entire time since 2005, the construction of Lowe's, that property has been land used and designated for future commercial development. And there have been some refinements over the years. The institution of more aggressive buffering in the rear has been a land use consideration. And the plan that has been presented does meet or exceed those basic standards. So I think that Brian had mentioned the 16 conditions that are part of the approval here. Those conditions are really based on, if you go and look at the Lowe's settlement, a lot of them kind of have stemmed from that Lowe's settlement. And a couple of the commissioners were involved in a recent project in 2000, the end of 2019, on Harrison Avenue next to the Kroger store. It was a BW3 proposal for Buffalo Wings and Rings. That formed another basis for looking at that. So we've got some consistency with the development proposals and constraints placed on Lowe's, placed on a similar kind of development with a juxtaposition against residential housing and downstream ponds. And I believe that we've been working and engaged with Soil and Water and Mo's group, Brian's group, with making sure that as construction proceeds, all the standards of the county are met. And the township is more than happy to maintain that position and kind of continue to see that what is supposed to be done is properly done and executed. So with that, if there are any questions I can answer on kind of maybe some background, happy to do it. But I think Brian's done a really good job representing the basics of the project. I know you've got a lot of information. So with that, I know, I think Frank Birkenhour Administrator also would like to have to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Getzmann.
Thank you. Frank Birkenhour is up next, he's the Edmund Zoom.
Frank Birkenhour, I'm the township administrator. Thanks, commissioners, for your time today, which I know these marathon meetings can take a toll, but appreciate just a couple minutes to let you know that the trustees met on April 12th, and this was live on cable television. It was live on our township website through our YouTube channel, and it's played back after that. Adam Getzmann and I were on the staff conference, we were available. And I believe, I've seen Kent Arnold, the developer, sent his personal cellphone and email to all the people who had emailed the commissioners. And I did not see any of those emails. And the minute I found out that the commissioners were getting emails, we said, "Hey, Kent, we haven't seen these from the township." I wasn't privy to those. And we asked that, they responded to that. So he put his personal cellphone and email and said, "Hey, reach out to me, here's my answers to those concerns." So I'd like to say we're transparent. The adjacent Lowe's development is a very big box with an outdoor center. This is 2.4 acres of open space with 100-foot conservation easements. It's vastly different, and the developer is exceeding what they are required to do. And that is why they've received unanimous support from Green Township and the trustees. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have any other hands raised at this time?
Okay, thank you very much. I'll open it up for commissioners if there are any comments as it relates to this consideration. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. I did have a couple of questions, but it was answered when the others got a chance to speak, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. So I just, I wanted to hone in on something here, because we have heard from the residents that they came to an agreement with the Lowe's development. My understanding is that that took a while. But they got, you know, this buffer area that they were looking for. They got the retention basin they were looking for, and some accommodations from Lowe's. And so the rendering that I've seen, and I've got the metrics that Mr. Arnold referenced, so I've taken a look at that. I've also got some, I guess they're like, you know, they're overviews of the property. And Brian, I hope you can answer this. So there is, from my read of this, there is a detention pond behind this area. There is a significant green space buffer behind this development. And so, knowing that that is a significant portion of what the concerns are from the residents down on the Chateau properties, I am having a hard time understanding what the difference is between what everyone could agree to behind Lowe's and what is being proposed for this development, because it looks really similar to me, and yet we've got opposition. So can you help contrast and compare those two things?
Sure. The differences, you know, obviously Lowe's was in a lawsuit at the time. It was interesting, the development was started by the property owners who did not have Lowe's under contract at the time when they started the zone change process. And then when they got into the litigation is when Lowe's actually stepped up. And so I believe that the, what I've heard from our prosecutor, that the Lowe's was really interested in getting the prosecution done so that they could get out. And what they agreed to was some of the things that were referenced by the applicant. They agreed to allow, to pay money to the Chateau Lakes Homeowners Association so that they could have an independent review of the stormwater plan done. They, I think, instead of a privacy fence along the top of the wall, they had pine trees, like Mr. Dorflin mentioned, and then they have a green wall. They have a plantable wall that was designed to have vegetation that grows basically out of the wall. So the wall looks green instead of like a typical wall. Those are the differences. The distances are all the same. The undisturbed area might even be bigger on this project than it is on the Lowe's project. I think the detention base on the Lowe's project is larger than it would be for this project. But in general, like you said, the retaining walls and the development are either as far or further away from the Chateau Lakes homeowners than the Lowe's is. And the conservation easement is the same width. And there's, I believe, like I said, I believe there's additional undisturbed area on this development there was with the Lowe's development. This is, we recommended approval of this for all those reasons. This is far and above, above and beyond what we typically get for developments along this stretch of Harrison Avenue. And there are a lot of other examples where there's less undisturbed area and less buffer than this that were approved previously. So we felt that they went above and beyond what we would typically get out of a commercial development on Harrison Avenue. And so we were comfortable with supporting it.
So it makes me wonder about this disconnect then, between, or seemingly there's a disconnect between the developer and the residents. Because if you are suggesting, and this is kind of my read of it too, that these things are very similar to one another, then, you know, and beyond planting pine trees, planting a living wall, it, you know, they just seem so similar. So I feel like, you know, there's a lack of communication perhaps going on? Or maybe I'm oversimplifying, as sometimes I do. But I just don't quite understand the angst of the two sides in getting together and just talking through, you know, the desire of the resident, the willingness of the developer, and just kind of sorting through these issues. And I know that it's our process, right? The county sets up this public hearing process, and people have the ability to participate. But I think maybe it might be helpful to have a more localized conversation about this specific issue related to the differences between, which seem pretty small to me, between the Lowe's project and this project. So I don't know, Madam President. I just, I've gone out to this location, I've talked to the, you know, and I think we all have talked to the township trustees, we've talked to the residents. It confuses me a little bit as to why we've got this disconnect, and again, this kind of conflict between these two groups. So that's kind of where I'm sitting right now.
Um, thank you. I had a couple of questions as it related to the landscaping and stormwater. Those were answered. My concerns are not worthy of, in my opinion, circumventing this project. And I hear about a disconnect, I hear you mention about a disconnect, but I really don't, I don't hear a disconnect, you know, other than, you know, one or two comments that was made. It sounds like the developers have tried to do as much as they can from the different meetings, the emails, and things like that. So in my opinion, I don't have enough concern to delay this project, but I will open it up for further discussion. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. And, yeah, I mean, I had a chance to also read some of the concerns and ask the township about them. Certainly, I had a concern about the developer not meeting with the residents. And we got a chance to hear from him where we are at this particular juncture. But, you know, that was one of my concerns. But I'm certainly willing to move forward with the will of the board on this. But I, that was my, I would say that was my main concern was... concern was the interaction. But if, you know, there, there were some other efforts that have been made in regards to this. So I'm willing to, like I said, go at the will of, you know, the board on this issue today.
Thank you. So no further comments to come forward. I would like to close.
Madam President?
Yes.
We do have a raised hand, I believe.
We do. Sorry, Kent, Kent Arnold, his hand is raised. Kent, you are unmuted on my end.
Thanks. I think that I just wanted to close out and just say thanks again for the consideration on this. And as I mentioned, the considerations for landscaping and for retaining wall specifics and for stormwater, those are critical issues that we will address in a public format at the right time. And just appreciate you taking this up today. But know that I have reached out to the people and I'll continue to make myself available through this entire process and just appreciate your time today. But at the time that we're at right now for this very first stage, we've met all the compliance requirements. And just again, thank you for taking the time today to review this.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I just say that while I do, I appreciate that. And I, and I recognize that there are 16, you know, conditions that have been put on, on this as it has, you know, gotten to us. And I appreciate that, that commentary. I, and I understand that there is, there are compliance standards, and then there are communication, communications with the residents. And they're two different things. And so, you know, if we're going to move forward with this, I'm fine with that. Because I, I recognize that staff and the township have done quite a bit of work here. However, I would hope that moving forward, the developer would be willing to meet in person with the residents, because I think that would allay a lot of the concerns here. And maybe they can come to some agreement related to the landscaping and some of the issues that are going to have to be dealt with here in the future. So I just, I don't know that we can put that kind of, you know, qualification on something. But I, from my perspective, certainly do hope that an effort is made to try to come to a resolution here that is something that everyone can feel good about. So that, that's all I got. But just want to close, close it out from my end. And, and do hope that that does come to pass.
Well, certainly, certainly appreciate your comments. And, and we do not forget that as they mentioned meetings that they did have, well, there was, during this time of the pandemic, we don't do things the way we normally do, of course. And so I, I don't know, I just feel confident that things were done to try to meet, meet the needs. But of course, as we move forward, not meeting personally is not something that's acceptable. And as we move forward, as we progress on additional items that are needed for this project, we'll be hearing more about that to make sure that that happens. Vice President Reese, I apologize.
Oh, no, no, that was great. And, and I certainly agree both with you and Commissioner Drew House. And I do want to, Mr. Arnold, I appreciate, you know, your testimony and everything. But I do think that we want to be very crystal clear. You keep mentioning that you met the legal requirements and you don't want to meet with them because they're going to do this or that. And I'm just saying, when, when you're dealing with the public, we're dealing with the public now. And it requires us to take a vote. I mean, if it was just a private business, you could probably do that if you didn't need to talk to us at all. But we are here elected by the people. And, you know, we have to listen to what they're saying. And I'm not saying everybody agrees, but I do, I don't want to set a tone where developers come before us and say, oh, we met the legal obligations. We're not meeting with people. You know, we, we don't want to talk to them. Or they can call me on my cell phone. They got to track you down. No, you're looking for a public entity, Hamilton County, for us to vote on it. And we represent the public. So unfortunately, you know, you may not like it, but you are going to have to go out and meet with the folks. Now, when you say we're not at that phase yet, I don't know if we get another vote or not. But I'm telling you now, we have an issue. We, we, this, this board has been very clear on, you know, being environmentally conscious in our, in our new investments. We're working on a lot of things on the environmental level. So if there's some environmental issues and all those things, we want that up on the front side, not on the backside. So I'm willing to move forward today, but I don't want this, I don't want to give a mixed message of, and I know we're not, but I'm, I think that our board, we have been very strong. That's why we have a public hearings on the American Rescue money. We're having public input. We may not always agree, but the public should feel as though they had an opportunity in a fair way. And all, at the end of the day, we do want a win-win. If we can get a win-win, a win for the community on both sides, that's what we always try to do. So I just, maybe it wasn't meant that way, but I just didn't want to leave that out there. I do agree with Commissioner Drew House in that regard and President Dumas. Even though we are moving forward, we want to make sure we understand that Zoom and all those things. But, you know, we don't want that to be a habit of how we do business here. And we have to go beyond. You may have, oh, I did what I was legally supposed to do. Well, we legally have to listen to the people as well and make sure that, you know, their concerns are also on the front burner. So I just wanted to say that because I know there are some residents that have concerns and we want to let them know that we, we heard them and we would like to have a better process going forward. So thank you.
Thank you. And I agree with both of you for sure. So, okay, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Ms. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Greenhouse?
Yes.
Very well. And Madam Chairman, I will have a resolution reflecting the Rural Standing Commission's recommendation for you in two weeks.
Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't we, I'm going to just go right down and go into our regular agenda. And then we'll go back to where we started. So Jeff, are you ready for that?
Except for the fact that I was muted. Yes, I am. So yeah, item one on the, on your regular agenda is a resolution authorizing the administrator to enter into a amendment to the, to the agreement between the board and the port, and the Port of Greater Cincinnati Development Authority. This is the $2 million allocation related to site readiness that the board had approved budgetarily and then approved through an additional appropriation or appropriated those dollars towards the beginning of the year. So there is included in your agenda is the amendment. This requires that the port authority bring forward individual projects to the administration, provide specific information to the administration related to the site readiness project. Ultimately, that that must be presented to the board and an amendment done to the contract with the port prior to, prior to moving forward. So happy to answer any questions, Commissioner. I should also say, I believe this, we're in the last year of this agreement. Holly can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I believe we are in the last year of the agreement. So to the degree that we need to modify this language later on, this is the first time we've done the site readiness this way. If we need to modify later on, we can do it in the context of, of the, of a subsequent agreement with the port moving into 2022.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for any discussion. Vice President Reese?
Madam President, I just want to certainly say I'm going to support this today. And I appreciate, I know this was one of the items that I wanted to have some tweaking done where they would have to provide the projects to us so we kind of have an understanding of, you know, what our money is going toward. And so I just appreciate the administration working on this and we'll, we'll support this today. I think it's a great amendment and going in the right direction.
And I certainly agree. That was something we had not thought of. And I appreciate that amendment too. So Commissioner Drew House?
Yeah, I'm fully supportive of this.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Ms. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And next we have MSD, item two, under the regular agenda.
And I believe Jack Renne Camp is on to discuss this. This relates to the delegislation of certain capital projects, which are typically done to delegislate, if you will, amounts that have been appropriated for projects that are not moving forward or for planning, design and engineering aspects of projects after planning, design, engineering has been done before we move into construction. But I'll turn it over to Jack for a specific discussion of this item.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jack Renne Camp with MSD and also Brian Welsh, our Deputy Director, is on the call with me today. As Jeff indicated, this second item is our request to your board to delegislate 74 capital improvement projects funds that have been previously appropriated over a number of years. That time span is between November 2005 and November 2020, as well as MSD CIPs that have been appropriated between 2007 and, and 2020. And once delegislated, these funds are no longer available to these projects for any of their expenditures. So the 74 projects have reached a stage in each of their progress that the legislated funds are, as I mentioned, no longer needed. And those various stages are either at the end of design or the end of a construction contract award, or it's in construction, or the project is completed and is now closed down. This legislation collectively delegislates $21,600,453.76. And after, if approved by your board, the changes in the total estimates of cost collectively once again decreases from 230, 233 million to 211 million. And we're happy to answer any questions you have concerning this request.
Thank you, Jack. I'll open it up for my colleagues, Vice President Reese.
No question.
Commissioner Drew House?
They have no questions.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item two.
Second.
Ms. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to indicate, Bridget, it looks like Mr. Dorflin wanted to say a word or two. And I feel, I'm fine with him being able to say something for two minutes. If he'd like to say something after our vote or decision to close the hearing. Is he still on the line?
Is not, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. I saw his name come up. Okay, so why don't we go to the front of our agenda? And we have time for, well, comments and motions. Commissioner Reese, do you have anything?
Okay, I'm sorry, President. I had, ready for the end. You said at the end.
Oh, you, oh, oh, you, you want to go through the consent agenda items? Okay, okay. All right. Your will is my, what is this? Your wish is my command. Here we go. So we have consent agenda items. Let me tell you, we have a few for, to receive for the record. Item number three is the auditor's statement of the financial transactions for April. And item number eight is the sheriff's has no objection to a liquor license. And under adoption, we have item four, which, which is a resolution for facilities to fly the rainbow flag in our building to recognize LGBTQ month, which is June. And item five for adoption is execution of the fourth amendment to the bond issue agreement. Item six is release of the helicopter for the sheriff department. And item seven is the Findlay Market Waste Reduction Grant, which is $10,000. So I'll open it up for any comments as it relates to the adoption or receiving of the record items. Vice President Reese?
Madam President, I don't have any major comments. I just want to point of clarification. Item number five, a, a amendment, fourth amendment to the bond purchase agreement. Just for understanding, and I want to thank Jeff for giving me that understanding. This does not affect our, our bond rating. It doesn't, you know, in any way affect our tax affairs. This is a, I guess, a pass through opportunity where the, the Reds can, or whoever, the baseball museum can use, go through us for bonds, but it doesn't, it's not on our books. We're not responsible for it. So I just wanted to, in case people say, you know, look at this, say, oh, you got another bond issue. This is more of a pass through, if I'm correct, right?
Correct. It's a conduit issue. It's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was what people were reading.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drew House?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight number four, which is the pride flags. So we've done this in the past. I'm grateful for the support on this resolution. In the past, we've only done it for the week that is like the Cincinnati Celebration of Pride. This year, we're doing it for Pride Month, which is what the city does and which other jurisdictions do. So we've got the flags ready to go. Facilities has them and they'll be flying proudly come June 1st. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record, item three and item eight.
Second.
Ms. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And for adoption, item four, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item four, item five, six, and seven.
Second.
Ms. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Let's go to the front.
We're finally.
All righty, comments or motions? Commissioner Reese?
Yes, Madam President, just a few quick things. One, had the pleasure today to speak at the opening of the Connecting the Dot Summit today session, put on by Our First Suburbs. And I just want to thank Tom Carroll for, for the invitation and certainly looking forward to the input that is coming from Our First Suburbs. And I certainly think it's a good thing to do is they are coming together and looking at, you know, how to move Our First Suburbs forward. So I just wanted to acknowledge them and thank them. Also want to thank Alma Mater with Ro High School. I had a chance to speak at the graduation and want to also congratulate all of the graduates in our county. This is a, last year, of course, and this year has been a tough year. And for our students, our youth to, to make it, to keep going, not give up, not drop out of school. They had to go online. They had to deal with COVID uncertainty. The prom was different, graduation. They didn't know if they were going to have a graduation or not. And to all the parents and guardians who kept the kids on track, because I know it was tough. A lot of them, you know, try to teach and go to work or try to do their work at the same time. So, you know, I told them that the word for this class of 2021 is resilience. This group is very resilient and very much prepared for this society because they, as the world threw a curve ball, they were able to overcome. So I just want to thank, thank Withrow High School, but also to all the graduates, all the families that I see on, on social media and so proud of their, their children getting their, getting their diploma. Also, we had a chance to, the icon had a sneak peek. And so we were able to, we were able to see it yesterday. And so excited about that. And also want to make sure that as we have the first anniversary, one year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd and certainly continue to keep the family in prayer. And certainly that was a very tough time and continues to be a tough memory and reminds us that we still have work to do. And lastly, Madam President, this month, completed my 100 days, actually. So I appreciate that and just looking forward to, you know, continuing to work on behalf of citizens. So thank you.
Well, congratulations on your first 100 days. Yeah. And you're going to count the next 100 and see, or what? It goes so fast. I don't know. So.
Every hour with the way the world is now.
Do you feel like you've been here longer than? Do you feel like you've been here longer than 100 days, or does it seem less than that?
It seemed less, it seemed like it just went, it's going quick.
All right, thank you so much. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Thank you. So two things, one is we had our final COVID-19 briefing yesterday. So it was a time to reflect on where we've been, and I feel like it's been a million years, by the way, not 100 days, because last year was such a challenging year for everybody. And so we, we reflected on the loss of life in Hamilton County, the very sobering conversation about that. Then we talked about some of the good things that came out of COVID. I mean, it seems a little weird to talk about that, but, no, the community did come together. We did help one another, we did, you know, deliver meals to the folks that were shut in, we did provide assistance to small business owners, we did provide rental, we did a lot of things, and we, we did create these great connections with so many of the providers, like United Way and Urban League, and so many groups in this community that everybody stepped up. We, we worked with the city, we worked with the other 48 jurisdictions. So there were some silver linings that came out of the pandemic, but it, you know, it's just been, as everyone has said, a very challenging time. But we've turned a corner, our numbers are all going, the vaccinations are going up in every, every age group, every single one is still trending up. Those that are most vulnerable, 70, 75, 80, 85, they're vaccinated at about 80%, which is fantastic. We're, we're having a slower slog with the younger folks, but they haven't been eligible as lo, as long. So we're getting there, we're about 52% countywide for those that are eligible, so we're getting there. But, you know, the, the positive cases are down dramatically, the hospitalizations are down, and the death rates are down. So we felt that it was an appropriate time, and I know both of you weighed in on this, to say, okay, we're, we're orange also, we're not red anymore, so that's a big deal. So I had our last briefing, and I did note that Greg evidently will be coming in once a month to our regular meetings, our staff meetings, as he has been. And so if people do want to catch up and figure out, you know, still what's going on, they have ample opportunity to do that. And the rescue plan will be talked about at our regular meetings too. So there's, again, plenty of opportunity for people to participate and, and listen in on what's going on for the county. But it was a bit, it was a little bittersweet. Thank the team for all the efforts that went into putting that together. And like I said, they were used to be dailing briefings. I mean, it was just a tremendous lift, but, but it was a good effort and I'm proud of the work. The other thing that happened yesterday was that we had to send out an overdose alert. Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition had a meeting. We had a spike of overdoses, we went up to about 21 overdose and some death related to that on Monday. And so we, we always evaluate these things and try to figure out whether or not that means that we've got a trend or, you know, we need to alert people to that. We, in the end, unanimously agreed that it was a good idea to alert the community, so we did that. And what we think that means, and it's, you know, we've got a lot of surveillance and things going on in the community, but we think fentanyl, it's, it's always fentanyl, is being mixed into cocaine, to meth, and heroin, drugs. And we have seen that people are using these drugs and they don't know, maybe the fentanyl's in there at all, and they certainly don't know how much fentanyl is in there. And so we see these overdose deaths. And so we had a significant spike, we put out the alert, the numbers are back down right now, that which is nine in 10 per day, which is not a low number, by the way, but we're keeping an eye on it, but it is very concerning, especially going into a holiday weekend. So just want to put that on everybody's radar and make sure that people, not that we are encouraging drug use of any kind, but if you have a family member that's struggling with addiction, or a friend that's struggling with addiction, please keep Narcan on hand and know that there is a dangerous mix of fentanyl going on right now in Hamilton County.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you so much. I just want to mention, as you were talking about the briefing, I just want to publicly thank you for coming out as a president of the commission and seeing the need that people were dying, just dying so quickly, and we, we needed immediate attention to this matter, and you brought it forth out of your office to have a regular briefing, so not only the public, but the media could be tuned in. And so I want to thank you so much for leading that forth. And as I became president, I thought it was inappropriate for me to try to come and take over the briefing, because it's so much more than what you do on Wednesday, the connections that you have made, the partnerships that you have made with the people who are on the phone calls. And so as it relates to COVID-19 and the strategy, so if it's working, why fix it? So you've done a great job, and I think it was just appropriate that you started it and you had the last, with the rotation with Commissioner Reese, you had the, you ended up at the last rotation. So I just want to probably thank you for that, and you're right, it was, it was time to end, things have gotten better, of course, as we know. And so I, I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And when I listened to it, you know, we're talking about the loss of life and everything, but it was a little bit like a memorial for the reporters. Because where can they come and ask 10 and 12 questions and then say, I'll be back with a couple more? And so they were like lost, like, what do we do now? So, but we thanked them for being attentive, but I said, what is going on?
Yeah, I told John, I told John London I'd split my lottery prize.
I heard that, yes.
It caught me at a weak moment, but anyway, if I win, I got to give it to him, I'll do it.
Absolutely, you're stuck, you're stuck now.
That's right.
Okay, I also wanted to mention, Vice President Reese had mentioned about connecting the dots, and so I spoke for the opening session yesterday. It's just a great session. I listened to it today, actually, Vice President Reese, I was able to hear you when I clicked the horn right before our meeting, and so that was great. And so I was able to listen to a little bit this afternoon before our meeting. So I want to thank Mr. Carroll for inviting me and our commission to be a part of that.
Can I say that my time was at 4:00 and I missed it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I told him, I said, I don't think I'm going to make that time.
Okay, so, and then lastly, I'd like to say that we were all present for the reopening press conference this morning, which was awesome for the Cincinnati Reds at the American Ballpark, and that we're trying to get back to normal as much as we can. The, the actual reopening is June the 2nd, and I'd like to just read this very short proclamation that the city of Cincinnati did, and we did it together, the county and the city. So a proclamation recognizing Reds reopening day, whereas opening day is and was and will always be a sacred holiday in the city of Cincinnati, Hamilton County, and the Cincinnati region. And whereas for more than 100 years, the people of Cincinnati and Hamilton County celebrated one of the best opening days in the history of sports. And whereas COVID-19 pandemic altered the past two opening day celebrations, causing Reds fans to cheer on their beloved team differently. And whereas the first time since 2019, the Reds are welcoming back fans at full capacity on June the 2nd, 2021. And whereas in recognition of those lost and how far we come together in fighting this deadly virus, city and county officials encourage everyone to not only wear red, but also light up businesses, shops, and storefronts, red the night before red reopening day and the night of June the 2nd. And whereas the city and county leaders are proclaiming June 2nd as a ceremonious half-day holiday in all of Cincinnati and Hamilton County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners and the mayor are proclaiming June 2nd reopening day in all of Hamilton County and the city of Cincinnati, and is signed by all of our commissioners. So that was a lot of fun, it's just the beginning of where we're going to be going. And I, when I gave my few comments, I was going to bring up my, my dad worked at Crosley Field for the Reds, then he went over to the stadium and worked, then he went over to Paul Brown Stadium and worked. So we didn't have enough time, they only gave us two minutes, but I, I think I might write a little article for Father's Day about, because it was really surreal to be there knowing that my dad had brought me down there through all of that. So, okay, now that we've had this long meeting, I could have held it for later, but, you know, we're here now. So I'm going to go to Jeff, and you have some by, by leaves.
Thank you, Madam President. Three by leaves today. The first is by leave number one in your packet, it is a resolution authorizing the administrator to execute a settlement agreement. This relates to the property purchase at 4385 Virginia Avenue through the Metropolitan Sewer District to effect a settlement. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions or comments by my colleagues?
No questions.
No questions, okay. I make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you very much, by leave two.
By leave number two, Commissioners, is, is resolution number 12. Just a little bit of background, the American Rescue Plan did authorize $60 million to be available and to be available for various arts purposes nationwide. And in order to be able to access those dollars, there needs to be an agency designated as a local arts agency or art service provider. So this is, we were, we, sorry, Arts Wave had reached out to the county to request designation of that, to allow them to be able to access some of that, those dollars through the National Endowment for the Arts, which is how those dollars will be distributed. So in order to make more of those dollars available for arts and cultural institutions within the Hamilton County community, we are recommending that Arts Wave be designated in our, a local arts agency and art service provider in order to allow for that. So I recommend approval of by leave number two.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Ladies are tired, I can tell, okay. I make a motion to adopt by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much, by leave three.
And by leave number three, Madam President, is just accepting for the record the email communications associated with several different issues, the American Rescue Plan public hearing, Columbia Township Zone case hearing, the Green Township Zone case hearing, as well as a communication regarding 5G cell towers.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No question.
Okay, hearing done, I make a motion to adopt by leave three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Dare I make a motion to adjourn without asking for additional comments?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Greenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks so much. We got a lot of good work done today, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.